Welcome to the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 18th, 2021. Due to the declared state of emergency and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus in pursuit to AB 361 and Fairfax Town Council Resolution Number 2140, this meeting will be held via teleconference only. There will be no in-person meeting location. The public can participate in the meeting in real time as follows. You can go to the Fairfax website on our agenda. There's a link to www.townoffairfax.org/watch-live-two. You can watch us on Community Media Center of Marin Television online at HTTPS backslash backslash cmcm.tv. cmcm.tv backslash 27. You can also join us on the Zoom meeting by clicking the link on the agenda for the Zoom meeting or by calling into the Zoom meeting at area code 669-900-6833 or area code 346-248-7799 and plugging in the webinar ID number of 852-7052-1962. Members of the public may provide public comment during the meeting using one of the following options. On Zoom, select the Raise Hand function during the public comment time, and you will be unmuted when it's your turn. If you were calling in, press *9 during the public comment time to raise your hand and *6 to be unmuted to speak. Prior to 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, members of the public may submit written comments to the Planning Commission. If comments are received after the circulation of the Commission meeting packet but prior to the meeting, they will be sent to the Planning Commission and will be part of the meeting record, but will not be read aloud. So with that, we will have our call to order. And Linda, if you could take roll call.
Okay, Fragoso?
Present.
And Solis Farber? Absent. Green? Kelly?
Here.
Jansen?
Sorry, okay.
Okay, Jansen.
Present.
Swift?
Here.
Chair Newton?
Here, thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to approval of the agenda, and I have a question. I'm interested in knowing whether we have a significant contingent of attendees here for item number four, because I'm interested in seeing if it's appropriate to move item four up on the agenda a little bit. If anyone who's here in the audience for item four could raise their hand for me, that would be great.
Chair?
Yeah.
I just wanted to alert you that I've already advised Shelley Hamilton, who'll be doing the presentation on item four, that this would be heard after the safety element. So I don't see her on the attendee list. So I could try to call her, but I'm just concerned that people who typically look at these agendas and the Planning Commission has generally been pretty static in terms of reorganizing, reshuffling where items are heard. I'm afraid that there might be members of the public who would be unable or who would be counting on this to be heard at a later time in the evening. Just a consideration.
All right, well, I will take that into account. And I'm sure all the other planning commissioners that will be able to approve or change the agenda will take that into account. But I'd still like anybody who's here specifically for item four to raise their hand. And I don't see anybody raising their hand. So with that, I'll go ahead and see if the planning, any of the planning commissioners want to make a motion on approval of the agenda. Over.
I'll move approval of the agenda as it stands.
Great, I'll second that.
All right, Linda, if you could take roll call on the agenda approval or take the tally.
Fragoso?
Present.
Are you voting aye on the agenda? Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Green?
Yeah, aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Chair Newton?
All right, so I'm going to read out the meeting protocol now. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior ordered to encourage community participation and citizen input at Commission meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Next, we're going to go to public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the Commission or Commission on Matters, not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Commission, must do so by email or in person via Zoom in the manner described above. Presentations described previously, I'm reading here. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the Commission Chair. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email as described previously, state their views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record. So we will now open this up for public comment on non-agenda items if you are, if you wish to say something. I do see a couple hands here. So let's start with Dee Lee, Deborah Benson.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for hearing me. I wanted to speak to the interaction between the Planning Commission and the Tree Committee. I'm a member of the Tree Committee. And having brought up the last meeting, something about replacing trees that were to be cut, and one of the Commissioners mentioned that they, I wasn't sure that you could go into that unfamiliar territory. I, a light bulb flashed in my head, and I thought, maybe they don't know about this part of the tree ordinance. So in the tree ordinance, 836060A, if I'm wrong, 27? Oh, no, 060, sorry about that. 060D. Reasonable conditions of approval may be attached to any tree removal permit, including, but not limited to, the replacement of removed trees. In general, removed trees shall be replaced at a minimum ratio of one to one. The Tree Committee shall have the authority to specify the ratio where necessary after considering any fire hazard risks. The site or sites for replacement may be specified by the committee. Replacement trees shall be of a reasonable size as determined by the committee based on the recommendation. Drought-tolerant native species that are not susceptible to sudden oak death syndrome shall be preferred as replacement trees. Security and maintenance measures may be required in order to ensure the successful establishment of replacement trees. Notwithstanding this section, the committee may authorize the planting of a lesser number of trees of greater size where this would further the purposes of this chapter. So I think that takes you all off the hook. And I, and I, and I thought you should maybe be reminded of it or be made aware of it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then we have another hand, Colin McDonald.
Hi, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
This is fantastic news. I'm Colin McDonald. I'm the co-founder of Hen House Brewing Company. I wanted to just introduce myself to the Planning Commission as we are taking over the old Iron Springs location in Fairfax. I wanted to tell you all about how stoked we are to be part of the Fairfax community. I also wanted to specifically give a thank you to Linda and Ben, who have been super, super helpful in answering my myriad of questions to them as far as getting us to compliance. You know, we're super, super excited to be part of the Town of Fairfax and really, really looking forward to making some beer downtown and kind of continuing on what Mike and Ann have done at Iron Springs as far as creating a community gathering space and a business that supports the community. So that is, that is my introduction to all of y'all. And I'm super, super grateful to the whole town for welcoming us the way that we have been welcomed thus far.
Thank you. All right, let's see if we have any other comments on non-agenda items. I don't see anybody else's hand at this point. So I'm going to close this part of the meeting and move on to the consent calendar, except there are no consent calendar items. So yippee, we get to move to the public hearing items. And our first one is 95 Chester Avenue, Application 2121. Linda?
Okay. This project encompasses the construction of an approximately 84-foot-long retaining wall that will vary from roughly two feet in height at the south end to roughly eight feet in height at the northern end adjacent to the proposed second stairway. And I just want to clarify, that sounds like a really long wall, but 24 feet of that 84 feet are wing walls that come back from the wall towards the street. So it's not just one flat 84-foot-long strip of wall. The wall is located to create two conforming nine-foot-by-22-foot parking spaces, which requires that the wall be constructed almost to the front property line. Second access stairway will provide direct access from the new parking spaces to the house above. And the creation of the parking spaces will include construction of a driveway connection from the edge of the paved portion of Chavito to the parking spaces that will be roughly 60 feet in width. The applicants have taken advantage of a permit that we don't process very often called a preferential parking permit. So they're requesting a preferential parking permit and an excavation permit from the Planning Commission. The preferential parking privileges for newly created parking spaces chapter of the code was adopted in December of 1994, three years after the 1991 Oakland Hills fire. And it was a direct response by the council to try to incentivize property owners to create parking for these houses that were built with no parking by giving them a break on the planning fees and trying to make the public hearing process on the parking a little less onerous. So if someone was proposing this parking in conjunction with a big addition to their house, they could not avail themselves of this preferential parking permit process. They would be going through the regular retaining wall height variance requirement and the excavation permit. The, this owner is just trying to create parking for an existing house where there is no parking. So we have had a few people, I think I looked it up for one of the other Commissioners. I could only remember six, six other permits like this that have been processed, so they don't happen very often because creating parking in the hillside is very expensive. Preferential parking permit applications are not contained in the town code. They are reviewed by the Planning Director, who's charged with requiring only adequate information to determine the location of the parking and its impact on public safety, vehicular and pedestrian conditions, and the use and enjoyment of neighboring property. So they wanted us to minimize the requirements to go through this planning process to get approval for the preferential parking permit, trying to make it easier. The ordinance also requires that the applicant demonstrate that the construction of the parking will require the investment of $10,000 or more of private funds. The proposed project has been estimated by the applicants to cost $125,000 to $150,000, and the building official has verified that that amount seems accurate for a wall of this length and size. The also, the ordinance exempts preferential parking applications from obtaining variances and encroachment permits. So that was one of the incentive items. And the code also requires that once the application is accepted by staff and deemed complete, that it be submitted to the Planning Commission for you to determine that the creation of the parking is in the public interest and to grant the preferential parking permit, which allows the owner to post the parking, private parking, for only their use. So the staff has performed a site visit, and we've determined that the construction of the parking will not eliminate any on-street parking spaces currently used on a first-come, first-served basis by the neighborhood. That's when we usually have problems with these preferential parking permits is if they're trying to take over, you know, pull-offs that have been used by first-come, first-served in the neighborhood. That's not the case here. There's a curb and a gutter, and it's, people don't park there. The town engineer has reviewed the project and the proposed, the project engineer's calculations and has determined that the project can be built at the proposed location without creating any geotechnical or hydrologic problems for the site, adjacent properties, or the public roadway improvements. The wall is actually going to obtain a pretty significant setbacks from the houses on either side, so it shouldn't really impact them. Ross Valley Fire Department and the Police Department have all reviewed the plans and have determined that the retaining wall, parking spaces, and additional access stairway and driveway access can be constructed without compromising the safety of pedestrians or vehicles using the right-of-way beyond what would be normally encountered when you have parking spaces immediately adjacent to a public road. There's no increased danger. And anyway, so basically, we, we believe you can make the finding that the parking will be in the public interest, and it will definitely be appreciated by these property owners who are, currently have no parking park quite a distance from their house. So we're recommending that you approve Application 2121 by adopting the resolution attached to the staff report approving the preferential parking permit. Oh, and also, the town engineer determined that the excavation amount is the minimum necessary to create the parking. So they're not excavating any additional areas for garbage cans or anything. So we're recommending that you approve the project by adopting the resolution to grant the preferential parking permit and the excavation permit for the construction of the proposed parking at 95 Chester Avenue. That would conclude our report.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for Linda? Commissioner Green?
Yeah, I understand that in the staff report, there's this, this $10,000 expense item. I was looking in, maybe I'm not looking in the right place, 10.24, and I don't see that as a requirement. Is it somewhere else?
Yes, it was in a resolution that I thought I attached to your staff report. So the ordinance itself says the amount shall be established periodically by the council. And if you look at attachment being your staff report, it's Resolution 1863 where the council set the amount that had to be spent.
Okay.
$10,000.
And then the only other comment I have about the report is on page two, under Conditions of Approval, there's kind of a hanging six, well, it's actually the top of page three. There's a hanging six there because it's a continuation of paragraph five.
In the report or the resolution, are you in the resolution?
No, it's, we'll see. Attachment eight, it's in the reso, yeah. Just a language thing is, I mean, was there, so the question is, is there a different ending to, or as on the end of page two? Or was something coming before modified with?
Oh, no, the, the self numbering thing, just when I went to the next page, numbered the second part of it six, and it really shouldn't be six. It's part of five, so then we'll renumber it.
Okay, and you answered my other question. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for staff? Linda, I have a question. Usually in our proposed resolutions, we have language about how the Planning Commission has held a duly noticed public hearing at which we took public testimony, reviewed the facts and the plans, and determined that the project complies with, you know, the town code or whatever. And I don't see that sort of form language in this. And I wonder, was there a reason or is that just a oversight, do you think?
Um, I, I thought I was kind of covering it at the end and the now, therefore be it resolved. But if you feel more comfortable in just stating that you've held a public hearing, I can add that standard language in the beginning.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with it being a with-as clause because I think at the end, it doesn't get into the kind of detail about the public hearing being held and, you know, all of that that I think is a good.
Okay, great, I will add that.
Resolution. Okay, and I don't see any more questions from Commissioners, so I'm going to look and see if we have an applicant that wants to join us. Helen?
Helen, Helen's our applicant.
Hi, Helen. Did you want to add something? You may have to unmute yourself. You probably get a little note that comes up.
You almost did it.
Yeah, you might have. You need to try again with the unmuting.
Hey, can you hear us now?
Yep.
Yay! No, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've, we've, I've lived here for, at 95 Chester for 41 years. And parking is becoming and has become much more of a problem than it has in the past. So we've been wanting to put parking in for years, and we're finally in a position to be able to afford to put it in. So.
We just want to be able to accommodate our own cars on our, on our property and get our cars off the street because there's a lot of other people that are certainly using the street here. If any of you have driven up Willow and onto Chester, you can see a lot of cars parked on the side and how difficult it is. So we just want to get our cars off and make it easier.
And then there's the chain-link fence on the other side of the street. So nobody, where the street is sort of collapsing, so people can't really park anymore.
That's a whole other issue.
But that is, yeah, that's a whole other deal. So if you have any questions, we're here.
Great. Do any of the Commissioners have questions? I see Commissioner Green has his hand up.
I just, I don't expect you to give me the figure, but can you sort of give me a feel for this $10,000 thing? You're spending a lot more, a little less, a lot, a lot less or anything? Can you give me a feel for what the cost of this project is?
Well, we've already, just getting to this point, have spent close to $10,000 in just fees and everything for engineer and all of that. And then the project, we've had some bids that are over $150,000, but we're hoping to bring it in somewhere around $100,000 to $150,000. So I, so I don't know exactly what you mean about the $10,000, whatever we can save. We were hoping, originally when we started this, that we can get everything done for $100,000, but everything that's going on these days and costs have risen, that that doesn't seem anywhere possible, so.
So we're thinking, you know, $125,000, $150,000.
Yeah, so it's pushing where we want it to be, but and we have made it, it does seem a little larger than what probably just two parking spaces. So I think we wanted to put the stairways, we can get up to the house easier and
Get our garbage cans off the street.
Get our garbage cans off the street, which are everywhere.
Right, okay, thank you. I just want to get a feel for the cost. Thanks.
Yeah, it's unfortunately high.
Norma?
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicants? Commissioner Fragoso?
Thank you, not a question but a comment. I noticed in the staff report the range of costs for this endeavor, and I want to thank you and compliment you for taking this on. It's a huge improvement in your own lives, but also for your communities. And many of us and your neighbors will appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, if you guys can hold on, stay with us. We're going to see if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item. And we may come back to you before we close the public hearing. So if anybody in the public would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised. Linda, did we receive any emails on this project after our cutoff?
I'm just going to check real quick. I have to check on a different computer, I apologize.
No problem.
Like, it's the most best setup here. Nope, no, no emails.
Okay, well, thank you very much for standing by. I'm closing the public hearing on this matter. I'm going to bring it back to the Commission for any discussion, motions, what have you. Anybody want to start?
Commissioner Green?
Okay, I like the project. I think, I think the only thing we've received from Neighbors is positive about it. So that's a good thing. And the, and these neighborhoods in the hillside, you have to have more parking. It's great to have off-street. So I kind of like the project a lot, is my comment. And I just had one change to, potentially to the reso, which is mentioned in the report, but it isn't, it isn't brought down as a condition. So I just thought, and I don't see it, maybe, maybe it's in there, but is to somewhere put a condition in, let me see here, number, whatever the next number would be, saying that parking spaces created shall consist of two conforming nine-foot-by-22-foot spaces, et cetera. I think it also says required parallel to a wall or structure in accordance with Town Code Section 1705204081 and 2. And I'm just add, add that as a condition because it's mentioned in the report as, as something that we'd like to see, perhaps I would like to see it. So I'm just recommending, just myself, that that be added as. Otherwise, I think this is a terrific project. And I do wonder about tall retaining walls with lots of earth behind them. Not being an engineer, a civil engineer anyway, I understand Fortran, but not, anyway. You know, I'm just curious if anybody else on the panel who, who can, you know, interpret that. And Miller Pacific is, is bar none too. So I like the project, that's all. Thank you.
So I'll just say that, you know, the only other alternative for parking is to do it head in, and that has to be 19 feet into the property. You end up with, either you have to create two walls and excavate to step it back, or you create it by the, you know, parallel like this in the hillsides. It's just, there's really only two alternatives. Some people like the parallel, some people prefer the, I think the head in is less safe because you have people backing out with walls on either side of them where they can't see who's coming on the street. I actually think the parallel is a lot safer. You can see who's coming and they can kind of see you in your lights when you're pulling in and out. So.
Yeah.
But I'm not an engineer.
Get some nice growth in front of it or a lizard or we have a wonder, a whole bunch of wonderful wall decors throughout town. You know, if you, if you encounter one of these on a hike, it's amazing. And so there's a huge lizard on one wall.
In fact, that lizard wall is another preferential parking permit.
Yeah, I walked around and looked for that and I could see. So it's a great idea. Thank you.
Commissioner Jansen, then Commissioner Fregoso, and then Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I'd like to add too. I think it's a good project. I mean, that clearly serves the neighborhood. And in response to the height of that wall, six feet is tall enough that needs to be engineered, but it's actually not a tall wall. It's about the height of a person. Much larger walls can be made, but then of course it gets more complicated. That's it. I'm supportive of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Fregoso.
Yes, I would like to just concur with Commissioner Jensen that a six-foot wall is not that much. And that neighborhood has some fairly tall and very attractive stone and, and concrete walls there. I considered the height and the indentation, but those are steep hillsides right along in there. So it's not like there's flat lands on either side and they're going to build this large wall that will barely be noticed with the slope in the hillside and will be, I think, an attractive and really safe improvement there.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I will concur with my colleagues here that I, I'm in favor of the project. I think that the applicant is fortunate to have such a wide lot there to be able to afford the double parking space in front with fairly little imposition to the neighborhood. It appears that they are evaluating the aesthetics of the actual concrete wall using an exposed aggregate to try to make it aesthetically more pleasing. I think it'll be a positive impact on the neighborhood.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have, somebody care to make a motion?
I could give a crack at it. I don't think we had any, I had one change of the conditions and that was it. So with that change, I would move to approve. Excuse me, resolution.
Could you hold on just a moment? I want to refresh your recollection. We actually, you'd pointed out the, the numbering was off. I pointed out that there's a missing standard language about the public hearing being held. And you also wanted to add another condition. So there's really like three changes, I think.
With those three changes. Good summary. Thank you. With those three changes by the chair, I moved to approve resolution number 2021-24 495 Chester Avenue Parking. Have a question?
Can Commissioner Green repeat his condition that he wanted to add just for clarity?
I can if he can't.
Either one will work.
Okay, so Phil, Phil, you want me to do it, Phil?
No, I've got, I've got it here.
Okay, great.
Parking spaces created shall consist of two conforming nine foot by 22 foot spaces required parallel to a wall or structure in accordance with town code section 17 dot 052 dot 040 sub eight, sub one, and sub two.
Thank you.
Okay. So with those changes and thank you for clarity. I made my motion.
I will second.
Great. Motion Green, second Fregoso. Linda.
All right. Fregoso?
Yes.
Green?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Chair Newton?
Aye.
Wow, the ayes have it. So if anyone wishes to appeal this decision, there's a 10 calendar day appeal period and a $625 appeal fee. And with that, we will go to the next item, which is 390 Cascade Drive, application 2123. And this is Ben and Cara. Oh, Commissioner Jansen, did you have a comment before we go to this item?
Yeah, just a question if the second resolution, 1863, needs to be approved to again. I'm not sure. Maybe not. Because that, it's kind of transfers over from the past. Is that?
Oh, do you mean for the $10,000?
Correct.
No, because that actually was a town council resolution setting the fee. And so they're, they're the only group that can actually change it or like reaffirm it. And they've just never changed it. They probably should, they probably should revisit it at some point and maybe change it, but.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. So Cara, how you doing? Okay, you're on mute still.
There. All right. I'm good now?
All right. Wonderful to see you and go for it.
Okay, good to see everybody. Um, so this project proposes to modify a project that was previously approved by the planning commission on July 18th, 2019. And the original project approval legalized some, but not all of the unpermitted work undertaken by the previous property owner of 390 Cascade Drive. And an unpermitted covered walkway that was constructed between the house and the garage was not legalized. And as a condition of project approval, the walkway was required to be removed, which it was. The project approval also granted an encroachment permit to allow the driveway and garage eve to remain within the public path easement that runs along the western side of the property. And in addition to the specific condition that the covered walkway be removed, the planning commission also required that the applicant provide two new parking spaces, which was done. One in the side yard setback and one in the front yard. And that was to bring the property into compliance with current parking standards. Other specific conditions of project approval included the removal, the, sorry, the removal of bamboo blocking the garage and painting the house all one color, installing siding windows and trim on the house that match and having the applicant sign, notarize, and record a revocable encroachment permit for the driveway and garage eve encroachment. So the applicant has removed the covered walkway, as I said earlier, and the bamboo blocking the garage. The revocable encroachment permit was recorded. And the applicant has provided the required parking. However, the exterior painting and some of the other required design element, elements have not been completed. During the process of installing the required sprinkler system, the applicant discovered that the original roof was in such poor condition, it would have been infeasible to install fire sprinklers in it. So because of that, the applicant decided to build a new roof that was raised approximately 10 inches higher than the approved roof. So that's one of the modifications that we're looking at. And then the roof eaves were also extended out from the exterior walls of the building from approximately nine to 28 inches greater than the six inch eaves that had been approved. So that's the other change we're looking at. So because we, there's also another change to the siding as well. So the town, the town has a standard condition of approval that states that modifications made to approved sets of plans require the approval of the planning commission. So because the applicant raised the roof and extended the eaves without an approved modification, a stopper work order was applied to the job. And the modifications to the approved project need approval from the planning commission. The ones that need approval are the increased roof height. So they're going from 12 feet, four inches to 13 feet, two inches. The extended eaves going from nine to 28 inches greater than the approved six inch eaves. And changes to the paint color and siding materials. The siding changed from the approved gray painted stucco and gray vinyl to new blue gray fiber cement siding and cedar siding. The existing stucco to remain would be painted blue gray to match. So the approximate 10-inch increase in roof height is, is a very minor change. And along with the extended eaves does not substantially affect the mass of the building, nor does it substantially modify its design. The higher roof and eaves do not significantly impact or modify the overall character or design of the style, the structure. And the eaves would extend no more than two feet into the required individual side setbacks, which is allowed by town code. However, the existing house, which predates the current setback standards, has a combined side yard setback of about 10 feet, two inches. And because of that, it does not conform to the required 20-foot combined side yard setback. So with the longer eaves, the house would maintain a combined side setback of approximately six feet, eight inches, and a minimum side setback of three feet on the west side and three feet, eight inches on the east side. So a variance is required for the combined side setback to allow the eaves to extend approximately two eat, two feet into the combined setback of the house. But this seems reasonable since the original house construction predates the current setback regulations. And this is the two feet in true, or projection is allowed by the code. Staff believes that the original findings that you made to approve the project still pertain to the modified project. So we are recommending that you approve the requested modifications by adopting amended resolution 201912, reflecting the revised plan set received by the town of Fairfax and reaffirming the original findings. And we have amended the original resolution number 2019-12 to reflect the revised plan.
Thank you very much. Do, do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Swift? Thank you, Cara. I had a couple of questions and I wanted to thank you for the table that you provided. That brought a lot of clarity to this. The revocable encroachment permit required by the original resolution, can you tell me when that was notarized and recorded?
That was notarized and recorded today. So it wasn't notarized and recorded before the building permit was issued. So that was something that fell through, fell through the cracks and that will definitely, you know, make sure, try to make sure it doesn't happen again.
The, um, thank you. And the, when I went out there and looked at the site, there's a new culvert in the pathway easement that wasn't a part of the 2019 application. So the questions I had on that is especially considering the recent rains we've had and the flooding. Does that need to be assessed by the town? And then once the, if the town assesses that is another revocable encroachment permit be required for that to be notarized and recorded before, I assume we would give a new building permit? Assuming that the resolution is approved, would that then need to be included as well? That, so if you want to go ahead and answer that one, and then I have one last question.
Okay. So do you want to jump in, Ben?
Yeah, I think what, thank you for your observation, Commissioner Swift. What I recommend is that we route that to the building department and have our building inspector assess whether or not this rises to the level of something that would require that type of a process, including having our town engineer look at it. So I think it's something that we can process administratively, but we will follow up.
Yeah, we actually, we actually talked to the building official about it and his capacity as the public works manager because it's really, it's not a structure in the easement. It's a drainage improvement and it would go through public works, right? And they would require a new encroachment permit for the drainage. They want to, they're going to want to see how the drainage dumps out onto the street, but it's all a public works issue. It's not under the purview of the planning commission.
Then my last question, and I apologize for the background noise of the puppy. Can you tell me if the original application for the siding was hardy board? Siding, because I'm just looking at potentially what would have been hardy, hardy board and fire resistant versus cedar? So just a general question on that.
Okay, no, I, I, I actually can't. I'd have to probably look through the original staff report and check into that. But if, if you, is there a, there's a concern, I'm guessing with.
I think you could maybe ask the applicant and I'll, and I'll look through the file. Well.
That's all I had. Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Swift. Commissioner Jansen?
Yeah, I'm looking for a clarification. In my understanding, the building has a five-foot setback on either side to the wall, to the mass of the building itself. And setbacks are not measured to the tip of each or encroachment. So the eaves encroaching that five foot plus on one side, there's a 10-foot easement. But I think in the presentation, Ms. Spencer, you mentioned some other numbers and I'm not sure that I understand those.
Okay. So what numbers were those that you didn't understand?
It sounded like you were measuring three feet from the end of the eaves to the property line plus another number on the other side. And I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, so. Let me take a look at the plans. So if you look at, like, look at page.
I think page one is.
Page five.
Page five.
Of the site plan, yeah, or the, the plan set. It, it shows the setback, the five-foot setback to the property line or to the easement. And then it shows the other setback on the the east side.
Yeah, it gives a dimension from the eve's edge and the property line, but that's not relevant, right? That has nothing to do with the setback. The setback remains five with an allowable 24-inch encroachment, encroachment maximum. Okay, all right. Making sure I understand what.
Okay.
Thank you.
I answered your question.
Are there any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. Cara, I have a question about the, the garage and the number of parking spaces. And I'm, okay, I'm looking at the site plans that show the garage is a garage. There's a place for one car just off the street and a second car Uh, just off the street and a second car. Horizontal to the street in the house, right in front of the house. Those are the three required parking spaces. Were those the. Do the improvements they made change the requirement for those three spaces? Is the, are the proposed changes affecting those three parking spaces?
No, they're, they're still there and they're going to be.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Now I'm looking at the photographs submitted with uh, this meeting's. Plans. And I look at the rear. Of the walkway where the garage is located. Is that not the garage at the end of the walkway?
It is.
Okay, how do you drive a car into those two windows? Into that one window? How, how does one drive a car into that garage? How is that? A parking space? A garage, how is that a garage? And I also noticed in the photographs, there's one SUV type vehicle. Parked this side of the garage. And then there is another vehicle parked. Also perpendicular to the street in the house. Just inside that driveway so that the other car can get in and out. What is that white tented area? That's in front of the house? Can you tell me what is there?
Um, I actually don't know. I just took those um, photographs when we went out to look at the um, the fence and to make sure that.
Okay.
Was there, so I think that's something the applicant is going to have to answer.
Okay, I guess my point is. That I do not see the three required parking spaces from before. And uh, it appears that the garage is no longer a garage. So there's a deficit of two parking spaces. But thank you for clarifying that and we will ask the applicant to uh, clarify that further.
Okay, and just um, to make sure I understand um, which, the area that you're talking about. So when you look at the attachment D, um, the, the two bottom uh, photographs that show the covered walkway before it was removed. And then the areas it had been after it was removed.
Yes.
When you look at the picture on the, the building up to the left, that's the garage. And then that area is the, and then the building on the right is the house. So if you look at the site plan. What you're kind of looking at is you, you're, you're facing um, you know, from the easement or. Driveway, you're looking towards the east. So you're looking towards the deck and the back half of the house. So that's not intended for a parking area, I guess, unless I'm not understanding. Your question or your comment.
I'm looking at page one of five.
So if I could just jump in here, on attachment D on the. Lower left photograph. And you were pointing to the two windows, I think, Commissioner Fregoso directly ahead. As you're looking at the lower left photo with the walkway over it. The blue. Building, as I understand it, is the garage, right? And the, the tan and wood structure is the house.
Why is it shown at the rear of the house?
No, that's, so if you go down to.
A hundred, a hundred and thirty-six feet away from Cascade Drive.
If you go down to uh, page two of the drawings. Where the parking plan is. Uh. The garage has that triangle inside of it, right? And if you were standing. Sort of at the. Outside the garage, outside the door of the garage and you turn to the right. That's the deck you're looking at in that lower left photograph. And the two windows are at the end on the right side of that 217 square foot deck.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That does make sense. It didn't make any sense because the photographs say the front of the house, which would be off the street. Okay. Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Thanks.
Great, are there any other questions for staff? All right, then uh, let's see if we can bring the applicant uh, into the meeting. Mr. Schapp.
Hello, Planning Commission, good evening. This is Joey Schapp, I'm the co-owner at 390 Cascade with my wife Stacy Schapp. We've lived in Fairfax for about 13 years. Our son goes to Manor School and we purchased this house about five years ago. Um, I'd like to first start by uh, answering some of the questions from the commission. And then I have a very brief presentation that I think will give some more details on this project. Um, so Commissioner Swift, um, regarding your question about the channelized water on the side. Um, so when we first moved into this property, we discovered that um, Pine Street. Overflow's water onto the top of our property. Um, and actually goes down this easement more correctly. And so uh, we found in the first year that it flooded immensely. And we soon found there were several problems with it. Um, when we presented our first uh, permit application. Um, there was some language around, we had to take responsibility for that erosion problem. And it wasn't specific at the time, so. This is the sort of design that we came up with, which is a combination of uh, erosion mitigation up high. There's a pipe that transports water from about midway down the hill to kind of near our garage. And then from there, we built this uh, sort of cement channelized ditch. That um, transports water to Cascade Drive um, and preventing erosion. Um, which was one of the major issues was that it was just dirt before. And the excess water coming from Pine Street would create additional erosion. Um, I have a photo in my presentation, I'll show you now. Um, the water's clear running through there, we pretty much mitigated all erosion problems. Um, and the water runs uh, through to Cascade Street. Uh, and so that's um, sort of a summary of that. Um, any questions or clarifications on that? Okay. Um, uh, Commissioner Jansen, you asked about the setbacks on the sides. Um, so on the uh, east side, um, the property, our house is setback five feet from the property line. And our eaves extend uh, 24 inches, our proposed eaves into that space. On the other side, because um, of the easement is not technically our property. Um, that's where the uh, eaves um, don't have the required setback in, in specific, especially the combined setback. And so they're also 24 inches on that side. Um, so um, I forget what the exact amount of setback, but it's not enough, the combined. And so hopefully the drawing illustrates that. And so the specific issue around the encroachment of the eaves is the left and right. Yard setbacks and the combined setback in specific. If this 10 foot easement was part of our property, we'd have no problems here. So this was an undisclosed element in our uh, property. And so um, it's something that we've had to work with. Um, the previous owners sort of usurped that easement and made it a driveway. And it sort of became part of the property and was sold to us under that understanding. Um, so um, I think that addresses the questions. Any other questions before I do a short presentation?
Um, yes, can you address the question of the um, previous design with the siding versus. Cedar that you're proposing now and was previous siding hardy board?
Yeah, thank you um, for reminding me of that. So in the original uh, permit application, we did not uh, propose any siding changes. Um, the uh, staff recommended that we repaint. That was about the only recommendation at the time. Um, we've since discovered that underneath the vinyl is asbestos. And we'd like to remove all that vinyl and replace all that with uh, hardy board. Um, there is one wall previously done in cedar. And so we're proposing now to do two more walls um, in cedar. Sort of continuing that design element and then all the rest would be stucco or hardy board. So I think I came up with a calculation of over 70% is fireproof materials. And maybe 30% would be the cedar um, on the front. And that would just be for a design aesthetic. Um, and so we've really tried to minimize the cedar in awareness of fire danger. And maximize use of stucco and hardy board. Okay, did, any other follow up on that? Does that make sense, Commissioner Swift?
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So I'm going to uh, there we go, join as a panelist, thank. Okay, excellent, um, share screen. Okay, excellent. All right, are you able to see my screen now on the presentation? All right, excellent, okay. Here we go, so just briefly on the project history, you know, we inherited a, a 50% remodel that was done without a permit and an undisclosed easement. And so these are the challenges that we've been working with and we've been trying to bring this up to legalization. Um, here's a summary of some of the major completed work. Here's the new parking spots added. Um, so we can pull two cars in directly here through the gates. And then one can turn sideways as a guest parking. Um, and then one goes all the way to the garage. So because those are all in parallel, it only counts as one that goes up to the garage. Um, this is the covered walkway which encroached into the combined setbacks that was removed. At great expense, it had uh, power and water going through it. And so all that had to be rerouted under the deck. That is completed now. Um, we installed a fire sprinkler system. This was kind of the root of why we had to do uh, changes to our roof. Um, at the time, the fire sprinkler requirement seemed, you know, easy enough. But as we started to assess the roof, we realized that it was in such poor condition. That um, it could not take all the fire sprinkler pipes, they have to be cut through rafters and it weakens the roof. And so um, uh, we decided to put a new roof on. Um, and while we were putting a new roof on, we decided to create eaves. And so that was um, not part of the original design. And that was, I think, the core of the issue that came up. Um, here is the um, the water that we channelized along the west side of the property. This is within the um, 10 foot easement. Um, when we, the first winter we moved in five years ago, it flooded immensely. And the pipes came loose from up the hill that were there and it flooded, as you can see. And so we've now done a tidy job of, of transporting that water to um, Cascade. And doing uh, erosion mitigation uh, up above on the hill in the easement. And uh, a lot of this water is uh, the result of Pine Street. There's probably about 10 or 15 houses that they're um, that all the water from the street drains directly onto the easement. Um, so it's manageable now, even with the huge rains that we just recently had. Um, uh, no major erosion came down the hill, so I was really happy with the progress there. Um, we got the encroachment agreement recorded today. I rushed that and made sure that got taken care of. I'm sorry that that didn't get completed earlier. Um, I must have missed it somehow in the process. Um, here's a picture of our um, proposed roof. Um, the new roof was to fit the fire sprinklers as mentioned. And we decided to um, improve upon the roof in the same process. We've added less than 6% height. Um, uh, we've kept the nearly flat roof. We're able to unify the slopes a bit, so the runoff from the roof should be better before we had. Um, sort of tub type roof where it would fill and take days to drain. Um, all the eaves are within the 24 inches um, of the encroachment rule. Except for our combined yard setbacks due to the legalized non-conforming lot. Were 50 feet wide, um, 10 foot more makes us 60 feet with the easement. And the structural for the roof has already been signed off by Mark, so um, that part has been done. Um, here's, as you can see in the drawings, just a rough before and after the proposed. Um, you can see the darker part on the front of the house, that is the proposed cedar. Everything else will be done in fireproof stucco or hardy board. Um, I also did a quick survey of the eaves um, surrounding our house. And so here's just a few examples of houses um, right around us and the eaves that they have. I'll just move through these, this is our next door neighbor um, to the east. And our next door neighbor to the west, both that have two story buildings. Our house is a single story building, so our, you know, six uh, or 10 inch raise in the roof is hardly noticeable. Considering the houses around us are all much taller. And uh, one more. Actually, one more here. And um, earlier today, I sent out letters of all the neighbors surrounding our house, um, supporting this project. And so I just thought I'd give you a visual map of those neighbors and where they're located. And so they're all the neighbors that will be looking at the house and improvements that we're doing. And so with that, I finish and open it up to any questions.
Thank you very much. Any uh, further questions for the applicants from the commissioners? Commissioner Fregoso.
No further questions, I just wanted to thank you for your new sketches and photographs that. Help clarify uh, several of the questions that had come up, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair Newton, you're muted.
Thank you, I was so eloquent, um. So Mr. Schapp, thank you, if you could stick around for a little bit. I'm going to open up the uh, public hearing now and uh, see if there are any comments on this application. From members of the public, if you would like to comment on this item. Please go ahead and raise your hand now, would be a good time. Okay, Mr. Thorpe and then Ms. Madden, so first, Mr. Thorpe. And you will need to unmute yourself, I think, somehow, if possible.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, sorry, sorry about that, everybody. Hi, my name is Jack Thorpe and um, I own uh, the property across from uh, Joey and Stacy's house. At 387 Cascade Drive with my wife Sharon Virtue. And I just wanted to uh, give a quick uh, voice of support for the project. We've been sort of following along as the construction on the new roof is uh, sort of proceeded. Um, Joey and Stacy have been really great neighbors, just sort of informing us as to what's happening and letting us know. And uh, you know, there might be a little bit of noise or a little bit of activity. Um, you know, the new roof is looking great. Um, and so we just uh, wanted to call in and voice our support for the continuation of the project.
Great, thank you very much, really appreciate that. Um, Ms. Madden.
Hi Commissioners, uh, this is Allison, I'm across the street over at 407. Um, I'm here with my husband and I just want to say that we're in full support of this project. And all of the improvements that have been meticulously laid out. Um, and you know, they've, they sat through that, that bomb cyclone with the roof wide open. And I just hope that you guys uh, can see that they're really, a, really a great family. And yeah, we just have nothing but support for this project. It's, looks great already, um, support for whatever color they choose, it's blue. Um, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, really appreciate uh, public participation in these meetings. Uh, Deborah Benson.
Hello, thank you. Um, I have a couple of, of comments um. Regarding the, the fire business. I mean, later on, we're going to be talking about making um, amendments to the general plan of, you know, to, to, to be more fire safe. And the cedar is a question. Um, I see the work they've been doing. I see the work they've been doing. It looks great. Cedar is a question, also the eaves. I know that there were lots of pictures of existing eaves. But when my property was inspected, the eaves were a real big issue. And fire wanted them to be closed off. The other thing is the culvert. I live right next door to a property that also has a system that collects all of the runoff from Pine Mountain. And the, that property is not flooded. But when the, when the water hits the street in the wintertime, even in, in semi-heavy rains, the water from next door creates a river that reaches to the middle of the road so that I have to use rubber boots to get into my car. So I'm wondering about that. And the other thing is, I'm wondering why these guys are being put through all of this, having to, to abide by the rules when everybody's able to build an ADU without going through anything. So those are my questions. And I think, I think I'm, I'm offering my support. So thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if we have any other members of the public. Mr. Shep's hands up. So I think maybe he got pulled out and we need to add him. Is that Joey?
I think he wants to respond to one of the questions asked by the other member of the public. His hand was lowered and it was raised during the last comment.
Okay, well, I do want him to stay on the panel because we may have additional questions of him as well before we close the public hearing. But I don't see any other members. So please bring Mr. Shep back in. And Mr. Shep, if you could just hold on a moment in response to one of the issues raised by Deborah Benson. Kara, I believe you and Linda had indicated that the culvert was really the responsibility of the Public Works. Is that correct? Is that my understanding?
Yes, that's correct. We asked Mark Lockaby today, and he said that's a Public Works area or oversight.
Okay, so in terms of Deborah Benson's question about, you know, what the issues might be when, you know, a large amount of water hits the street from a culvert, those are more appropriately addressed to the Public Works Department as opposed to the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Shep, did you want to respond to any of the comments from the public?
Yes, Chair Newton, thank you. Regarding the eaves, the undersides, which are known as soffits, we will have enclosed soffits. So that will address the fire issue. And so that, that's part of our design element there. So just wanted to note that.
Are there any other questions of the Commissioners for the applicants at this point? Okay, Mr. Shep, thank you very much. We'll demote you back to the general public.
Thank you.
And I will close the public hearing and bring this item back to the Commission for any discussion. Does anyone want to begin the discussion? Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Chair Newton. I just wanted to start off by saying I'm generally in support of the project. It seems like a very modest project and seems that the applicants have had to jump through quite a few hoops to get up to code minimum. And they've gone the extra mile and it looks great. With regard to the eaves, which seems to be a large part of the question here. You know, as an architect, I would definitely recommend that any house that is going to receive the type of rain that we have, have eaves. It's going to help keep water intrusion to a minimum on all of the wall surfaces that those eaves are protecting. And I think it's a good change that they've made here. So with that, I'm generally in support of the project.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Fregoso?
I'm ready to make a motion if there are no further comments or questions from the Planning Commission. Not hearing, not seeing any hands up. Madam Chair, in that case, I move to approve the requested modification to application number nineteen dash eleven by adopting amended resolution number twenty nineteen dash twelve, reflecting the revised plan set received by the town of Fairfax dated eleven nine twenty one and reaffirming the original findings and conditions for the revised project approval and approval of the conditional use, design review, and combined side yard setback variance. Should that also include the encroachment agreement that was required? Or was that already in the prior agreement? I noticed the applicant has just executed it.
Right, and so what we did is we just referenced, I think it's the first condition in the resolution states.
That they shall sign the encroachment permit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I did, I did also see that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't required in the motion.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Okay, I believe my motion stands of finalizing with the combined side yard setback variance.
All right, and before anybody seconds it, Commissioner Swift, did you have a comment or a question? Or were you going to second the motion? I wanted to have a friendly amendment to that motion in that if it is not in the amended resolution, I would like to add a condition concerning the culvert, that it be reviewed by town staff and that the condition of the encroachment permit be added to that before the building permit is issued.
I'll, I'll defer to staff, but I believe the culvert situation is to be, is to be covered by Public Works.
And Yep. But I don't think there's a problem with, Kara, is that already in the reso? Or it's not a problem with adding that, that it has to be done before the building permits issue? Sometimes they get, you know, it gets forgotten.
I'm looking to see if there is such a condition of construction permit, self-fulfilling, building, utilization of permitted work.
Well, I don't think there is because didn't we just find out about it today, Kara? Yeah, so, so you should add that.
There is, there is not a condition. That could be condition number five. That
Yeah.
That the culvert, the system, the, the design and system and installation of the culvert be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department or language to that effect. And
You know, since it's a roof, you may want to consider saying, like, it be reviewed and reviewed and processed consecutively with the eve permits because we're really trying to get their roof going. You know, we don't want it sitting there.
That's
Is that okay with you, Kara? Because I, I would hate for another big storm to come. And then we've held them up for this. You know, if they, we have a Public Works Department that, you know, it's, it's, you know, he's here one week and then he goes back home one week. So it's not, it may not be that easy to negotiate.
Could we then add it to condition number one, which refers to the modification of the roof peak height and extended eaves? Or should that be a separate section?
You know, I, I think it might be best to have it be just a whole new condition.
Yeah, like number eight.
Okay. I'll take the attorney's advice on that.
Because it doesn't relate that much to the roof. It, it's totally a separate drainage issue. So I think, I think it would be best if it were separate. You know, maybe we could say twelve, thirteen.
Okay, but, but I do
Twelve and, and twelve, thirteen or something like that.
But I do like the language of, at the same time that the roof work is being done, that that would be considered as Linda had, had suggested. Phil, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's, that's a timing thing anyway. So it doesn't necessarily have to be right there, but it could be, could be a five A or something like that.
Why don't we give, can we give staff the discretion to fine tune that language?
I think you said it pretty well to have the town, have the town Works Department review the, that part of the project and approve it as a condition to the use permit.
Okay.
And Commissioner Fregoso, if you could just decide which condition number you want to give it. I'm sure staff can renumber the remaining conditions accordingly.
I, it could be, it could be number eight. I, I'm not concerned about what number it is as long as it's included.
Okay. So I think I have noted all those changes. Staff, do you feel comfortable that you have all that in hand? Great, is anybody interested in seconding Commissioner Fregoso's motion?
With the friendly amendment.
As amended. Oh, now we have too many seconds. Commissioner Janson, I heard you. So I'm going to go with Commissioner Janson as the second. And then Kara, if you could take the role, or is that Linda's job?
Yep, I have a little list here. Fregoso? Are you
Well, I vote, yeah, I, I, I vote yes. I think you read it, but you're, you're, you didn't come through.
I know, I'm fuzzing it out, but can you hear me now? Yeah, it said my, it said my computer was unstable for one second for some reason. Okay, so Green?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Janson?
Hi.
Swift? Swift?
Hi, sorry.
That's okay, Chair Newton?
Hi. Okay, another unanimous Planning Commission decision. Awesome. There is a ten calendar day appeal period and a six hundred and twenty five dollar appeal fee. If anyone's interested in appealing the Planning Commission's decision here tonight. Thank you very much, Kara. And now we will go on to our next item, which has to do with the general plan safety element. And Director Berto, are you giving us this, this item?
Chair Newton, I will be introducing this. And I would like to ask the Zoom mistress to promote Richard James to panelist for this. He will be making the bulk of the presentation. So in, in, as a brief background and introduction, the town is required to update the safety element in conjunction with the update of its housing element. And I want to emphasize that the town takes safety concerns very seriously, particularly fire-related safety concerns. It's noted that this is an area topic where there's a lot of emerging information and efforts that have been directed towards improving fire safety, both throughout the state and in Marin County. So we, as, as part of this effort, we're incorporating safety element related items in our housing element update. And I, I just want to say that that has been a concern from the beginning. For example, we have already developed one way in, one way out maps that we use to guide the discussion when the Commission took up the objective design and development standards. And we were considering applying those to duplexes and fourplexes. So what you have as part of your packet is a very preliminary draft safety element that shows proposed changes being recommended by staff. And Richard James has been working on this. He's from EMC Planning Group, who is working on the town's housing element and also safety element. And he's here tonight to make a presentation. At the conclusion of his presentation, we have several requests for the Planning Commission, and those are listed in the staff report and will also be repeated in his presentation. So with no further ado, I will introduce Richard for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Commissioners. I will share my screen and get the slideshow up and be right back with you. Come on. There we go. Ah, there we go. All right, so the agenda on this, on tonight's slideshow, there'll be a little background on the safety element. Tonight's objectives, which we'll repeat again at the end for discussion sake, and then an overview of changes to the safety element. So the safety element is one of the mandated elements of the town's general plan. And the last four or five years, there have been a number of bills that tied changes to the safety element to update of the general, of the general plan housing element. And of course, the housing element is due next December. Those changes include addressing climate change vulnerability, resiliency to climate change, single egress streets and evacuation. Furthermore, there's quite a bit of new understanding on wildfire behavior coming out of some of the wildfires over the past, you know, number of years. So we launched straight into the safety element update. We started with the housing element process because we thought it was important for the safety element to inform some of the decisions that would come in, into the housing element. We have held consultation with stakeholders and committees. We went before the tree committee and I think it's the Climate Action Committee. We were at the Housing Subcommittee in October. And future, there will be a brief inclusion of this in the virtual workshop that's being held on Saturday. December fifteenth, we'll be going to town council. And then we will bring this back to both Planning Commission and Council in the spring. August, when we hope CAL FIRE has released new fire hazard maps, we'll have the final public draft ready. And then it will go through Planning Commission Council hearings for adoption in December of 2022, so a year from now. Tonight, we would like feedback on additional factors that should be considered in the safety element if we've missed anything. Any information you would like to add as far as activities of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, Fire Safe or Fire Wise, or the Neighborhood Response Groups? Any suggested revisions or new programs or actions to be prioritized, including feedback on evacuation routes and refuges? Those would be emergency refuges during a disaster. And then finally, how information in the safety element should inform the housing element update? So we reorganized a few things. In the community preparedness section of the current safety element, there are separate subsections on geologic flooding and fire hazards. And we've taken all of those that are specific to those particular hazards and moved them into the earlier sections that specifically address those. And then refocused the community preparedness section. We've updated some of the maps. What's in your, your version, the red line version, are still preliminary maps. We haven't really gotten to those finalized yet. So we recognize there are some, some things that need, you know, improvement on those, but welcome to hear your comments. And then we've added some information from the Marin Multi-Jurisdictional Local Hazards Mitigation Plan. A lot of that appears in the, in the form of tables showing vulnerability to very Uh, a lot of that appears in the in the form of tables showing vulnerability to various hazards. And then finally, I'd like to note that when the Housing Subcommittee reviewed the safety element a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they particularly suggested placing focus on action programs. And did request a summary of how much of the current. Current safety element programs have been implemented. So you've got a little sheet that shows. Um, in general, what kind of progress has been made in the last 10 years or so? So in terms of geologic hazard section of the safety element, not too many updates, a few minor changes, but nothing too significant regarding geologic hazards. A little bit more on flooding. We did include. Some, uh, some discussion on effects related to climate change as mandated by recent legislation. A few new new or revised programs, one requiring hydrological studies if you're in a flood plain. Um, requirement for flood certificate at various stages of development of a of a property. And then a program calling for. Flood resistant design criteria for public improvements such as bridges. Fire hazards is where we really put a lot of a lot of effort into updating the safety element. Of course, climate change has. It appears increased fire intensity and fire frequency significantly in California over the last few decades. Uh, we've added some specificity to the programs. Uh, we added street dimensions to some where it's simply referred to narrow streets. Uh, we've. Discussed a little more in detail shaded fuel breaks. Uh, there was one that required smoke alarms. We added carbon monoxide detectors because those are now also required. And then some new and revised programs and those focused on emergency access at hard to reach houses. Um, home hardening, how to make your house better withstand. Uh, a fire, especially of of large wildfire and then fire escaping the landscape so that. The plantings in and near your home or, you know, adjacent to your home are more resistant to wildfire. And like I said, we were interested in comments on evacuation and refuge. This is the map that's put out by Fire Safe Marin. This is the official evacuation map for Cascade Drive. And as you can see, the two refuges that exist are Doc Edgar Park, which is a little triangular park with some large trees over it. Down near the bottom and Meadow Club Refuge, which is really serving Bellinas Road, not Cascade so much. Um, the town forester has reviewed these evacuation maps as a number of comments. Um, one of which is to consider the possibility of establishing a refuge with, uh. You know, cooperation with the open space district at the Elliott Preserve at the top end of Cascade Drive. Um, looking at a map of the preserve and the aerial photos, it looks like about the point where. The main road goes across the creek and the high water trail takes off. There's a kind of open space in there. Of course, that's open for discussion. Um. We're we're really concerned with a. Uh. Situation like this, and there's a few other roads in in town that are like this. If there were, for example, an earthquake and a landslide somewhere along the road, which is your evacuation route. And a gas line broke and started a fire. Where could you go and how could you be safe? Uh, so that's kind of. Why we're really looking hard at these evacuation routes and how can we? How can we improve them? How can we add to public safety? So the final section of the safety element is the community preparedness section and we refocused this quite a bit. So like I said, it used to have. Subsections on each of the particular hazards and we've shifted those back. Into the earlier sections. And focus this more on dissemination of information. Facilitating citizen emergency response. Uh, planning for evacuations and then response to various disruptions that could occur during a disaster. So we've added some new programs on increasing resilience, evacuation awareness. Assurance for mobility challenge and special needs that they can be evacuated out. Um, Fairfax is fortunate to have a very good. Uh, fire safe community and a very good neighborhood response group. Community. So there's a lot of neighbor. Uh, communication that can happen during an emergency. And so that's all very much in favor. Uh, for these people, but we want to make sure that they're accounted for. And then personal safety during evacuations. So again, these are the discussion items for tonight. We'd really like feedback. Um, it's a repeat of the earlier slide, additional factors that should be considered, information on the various groups and what. Efforts they have in place and what they bring to the community, what they can bring. Uh, any suggested revisions on the new programs, especially prioritizing towards whoops. Well, I can't get back because this free version I have of PowerPoint won't let me go back. Don't think. Although it is it, maybe it went the other way. Oh, it did. Okay. Um. Especially that evacuation routes and refugees, like I said, we're really concerned about how can we improve safety in some of these remote or more remote parts of town? Uh, how can you get people out to Sir Francis Drake and safer areas or how can you harbor them if they can't get out? And then finally, information on how the safety element should inform the housing element update. And with that, that's the end of the presentation and we welcome planning commission comments.
Great. Um, thank you very much. Are any of the, do any of the planning commissioners have questions for staff or Mr. James about this presentation?
Commissioner Green?
Um, just just a couple of things about, I mean, I think this is, you know, congratulations. You've done a lot of work here. Um, let me start out with that and say, you know, thank you for your efforts. I mean, it's a wonderful. You know, thing to do and I think fire hazards are. One of the more, you know, recently increasing forms of problem we have. And in that regard, so one of the things I want to ask you about is the use of the words. Um, natural hazard events. So that this occurs in various places, but it's page S two. Um, mentions this. And I'm not quite sure what's meant by natural there, because fire. Is caused by, you know, we've recently in the last couple of years, we've heard of fires caused by trucks, arson, PG and E. Um, unfortunately, issues and things that aren't natural. So it seems to me the word natural there kind of limits it. Um, and I would maybe say to take that word out. It's kind of like we're going to get into the word character soon. Um, here. This is a limiting factor, I think, and I'm an attorney, so it just, you know. Bear with me a little bit, perhaps might be overkill. That's that's kind of an overall comment I have, though. Um, I think this is terrific. This is exactly what we need to do and keep doing. Um, and you guys are the best, you know, you're just really, you know, to even think about what happens during an evacuation. Um. If a gas pipeline bursts along that way. Yeah, that's right. Exactly. So then. You know, someone's thinking about that and it's like bless you for doing this. Um, but there's just that comment I just made and I think we got to revisit the word natural and make sure we're not limiting ourselves too much.
Uh, we'll hold off until, you know, I don't know if you guys want to answer Phil's question before I go to the next commissioner. About natural hazards question?
Right. Um, I could briefly respond that. There is a clearly established correlation with human activity and increased incidences of fires. I mean, when. Foresters or fire professionals are looking. Uh, you know, we're we're in fact, that's been one of the major concerns with development in the wildland urban interface. Is that with that development and and as Commissioner Green noted, there's many, many sources. Uh, for fires, only a few of them, which I guess you would term natural. Um, but. It's the old question of, you know, human beings' relationship to nature. And the degrees to which we influence it. For example, we also know that. Uh, our activities in in increasing hardscape and channelizing, uh, runoff. Um, has a direct impact on increasing the peak flood hydrograph. And and the fact that we've eliminated much of, uh. Uh, historical flood plains also exacerbates. So. Uh, I guess it's one of those things where we, uh, as, uh. Hopefully stewards of the environment, uh, try to adapt. To not only what we see on a global scale in terms of climate change. Um, but our own direct roles in the environment. And that's part of this conversation about. For example, getting down to the granular granular level of home hardening. Um, Fairfax is very involved efforts in promoting things like fire wise neighborhood groups and things like that. So. Um, it's 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 a tricky question. Um, man has a role, nature has a role. Uh, and the the two, uh, combine to create a kind of a combined. Uh, effect and impact, if you were.
Right. I I so I agree with that, Ben. I I see that, of course. I mean, but this isn't the idea, the the. Comment here is about the language of the. On the red line and maybe we don't want to say natural because it hinders it and maybe want to say something broader. You know, any fire, any hazard events.
Yeah, I don't see any harm in taking out natural.
That's all. I mean, uh, and and there's a few times when the word natural might be used where. It's limited. That's all. We want to just watch out with, you know, limiting language. So that some planning group in the future in 20 years might not say, well, it wasn't a natural condition, so we don't want to plan for that or something like that. It might happen, you know, we don't know what people in the future are going to do. I'm not going to necessarily be here on this panel 20 years from now to control everything. So I think that in the future, and we never know if a judge might get involved in anything, you know, and you've seen judges on TV lately. Some of them are a little. Different.
Okay, um. So I'm focused on questions. Because we heard that the, uh, the request is for us to. Way in on the four issues that, uh, were in that slide. So again, I'm just asking if there are questions. For staff and, uh, Mr. James at this point, Commissioner Jansen.
Uh, just a question about schedule. I did see when the next meetings are coming up. So after the public input, then, um, what is going to happen between spring and the end of next year? There are more details.
Yeah, the final update to the safety element would take place in August. And we're hoping at that point that CAL FIRE has issued its updated. Fire hazard severity map so we can have our most up to date information in on, uh. Fire severity hazard. In the town. Uh, but I think I don't think a lot is happening. We'll be doing an update to the safety element based on. Input from planning commission and town council. That will happen right at the end of the year. And I guess we'll be coming back in the spring with that version.
And then there was a second round inputs and then it becomes finalized?
Yeah. And of course, we go through planning commission and council again alongside of the housing element. And September, October, no, probably November, December, or possibly October, November, December.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. Um, on this slide that you showed us about the, uh. Refuges and evacuation routes, you had the. Highlighted the, um. Refuges for, uh, at Doc Edgar and Meadow, I think was the other one. And then there was a potential. Uh, refuge area. At Elliott Preserve. There was also an X on Toyon. Can you tell me what that? Is depicting on that?
Yeah, the Xs, I believe depict gates. There's one also at the top of Cascade where the gate goes into the open space area.
And and so the gates conceivably creating a barrier to an evacuation route? Is that the idea?
Yeah, they would. They would be places you couldn't go by automobile typically unless by some chance there was someone opening the gate for. Automobile traffic, but of course you could go past them generally on foot if you were on foot.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, not seeing any other questions. Is it possible to pull up that? Uh, well, maybe you can read it for me. The first area that you were asking for our input on. Was with respect to the additional factors. That you wanted us to identify. Is that correct?
Correct. Additional factors that should be considered in the safety element.
Do any of the commissioners want to weigh in on that area of the discussion? Commissioner Swift? And I didn't know if we were in question or discussion mode and had we gone to public comment yet? So are we still in questioning mode or discussion mode? Thank you for for asking that. We are moving towards discussion mode, but you're correct. I should, uh. Open it up for public comment. Before we do that. So thanks for. So hold off Commissioner Jansen and, um. Anyone in the public who wishes to provide some input to the commissioner? I do see a couple of hands raised. Pamela Meggs.
Good evening, everybody. Um. Couple of things that I, you know, because I've been working on the fire wise, but also NRGs up here in the Cascades is. I was thinking as an overview for the whole town. To try and capture or get a list of health professionals or people. Who have expertise CPR, whatever it could be. I know we're trying to do that in the NRGs, but it's very. Limited and disorganized still, so we still don't have a coordinator. So that's one thing. That I would think would be a good thing to do. Secondly, and I, this thing has been bugging me for years, is the addresses at the homes. Because I've walked a ton of neighborhoods for various campaigns. The numbers are missing. Or you can't find them and you walk and walk. So for an emergency, you've got to know these numbers on these addresses and it's sort of been left. By by the wayside. And then third, um, we don't have a safety council yet or a disaster council and. I'm just wondering, should we wait till we get that group together to finalize this element? So. That's the trouble I'm causing, Mimi.
Good trouble.
All right. Thank you. Deborah Benson?
Thank you. Um, forgive me, I'm a proofreader by nature. So I noticed in, um, program S dash three. Dot one dot two dot eight. Um, there's a sentence, it says thinning of non-fire resistant vegetation. And or non-native species such as eucalyptus and pine. However, we do have native pines. And on our heritage tree list in the tree ordinance, a bishop pine is listed, Doug fir, Sergeant Cypress, there there. Forty different species of pines. And so I think that should be. Uh, more descriptive. And then, um. The part about pyrophitic trees points to section three. Uh, one dot five dot eight, but if you look for that, um. You actually find. Uh, it to be in S three dot one dot two dot nine and, uh. S three one dot five dot eight point something to something else entirely. And then some of the undesirable trees that are suggested to be added to the tree ordinance are already there. Acacia is already on the tree ordinance, um, Monterey pine, Monterey Cypress and and pines again. Um, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Frank Edgar.
Good evening, commissioners. You've got a difficult task in front of you here. I've scanned the 92 pages of the safety element. And this is probably the most difficult element you're going to have to deal with. And and this is kind of a little scatter approach. You know, I looked at the evacuation maps and and locations. For instance, Tampa Pius and Forest Avenue go to the Ross Valley Fire Station. That's the Fairfax Firehouse. What we really need is is populations for these neighborhoods to understand how many people are going to be evacuating to whatever areas they're being recommended to go to. For instance, the Cascades and and Deer Park and actually portion of Bleanish Road go to Doc Edgar Park. Or the Meadow Club, I guess, if they can't get the dark Doc Edgar Park. There's about 1,500 residents in the Cascades. Deer Park and Bleanish Road have about 1,000 residents. So I'm not sure how we're going to evacuate 2,500 residents into Doc Edgar Park at the beginning of the Cascades. What we've seen in the fires up north, the evacuations take place at the nighttime. And and if electricity is out, which is very common, and the smoke is enveloping hillside areas of Fairfax, you know, it's difficult to even see where the roads are. And so Fairfax is going to need need emergency lighting, arrows, evacuation mounts with arrows come coming off the hillside areas to direct people as to where they should be going. The staging areas are really totally insufficient to handle the number of cars and people who will be evacuating. You know, we had one accident on Sir Francis Drake. What was it? I don't know, four months, three, three or four months ago. And it blocked up Sir Francis Drake, blocked up the upper Ross Valley for like two hours. Nobody could move. So we've got to deal with with that, those kinds of issues. On the flood hazards, it says high tide just backs up into Kenfield. Actually, high tide backs backs that creek all the way up into San Anselmo. And it reduces the flows to San Anselmo for sure. So the element needs to identify the height of the roads and the bridges above above sea level. So so we can all understand exactly you know, how it's going to be impacted with high tide. The flood in 82 and a flood in 2005, both those floods were triggered by high tides. I mean, it really pushed them. If Fairfax floods from the top down, for instance, Laurel turns into a river and it flows down the Cascade Drive and it flows down to Bleanish Road. Hickory and Lower Cypress flow like 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 streams down the hill, down to down to Cascade, then to Bleanish Road. Rusta flows down to Park to Bleanish Road. And then on down, it it starts flooding. You know, the the report says the creeks overflow. But the problem is this, these waters coming off the hillsides never reach the creeks. They're flooding our streets before they ever make it to the creek. Willow floods down Willow to Drake and to Past Story, that area all floods. What's interesting is the town hall extension over Fairfax. That needs to be removed and and Fairfax has to relocate that section of town hall that goes over Fairfax Creek. Fairfax Creek was diverted under Bleanish Road in 1931. And and the culvert under Bleanish Road was cited in the 1958 Fairfax General Plan as totally undersized. It needs to be enlarged to reduce flooding in downtown. Fairfax Creek returns to its original path, down Bleanish Road to Broadway to Pacheco, all under the buildings. The original confluence of Fairfax Creek with San Anselmo Creek was behind the post office. It actually passed behind Chair Newton's home. That's where Fairfax Creek, you know, came out. In in 1982, we had so much flooding and so many landslides blocking access to major roads. I had, I contacted the the governor's office that afternoon. And then and that was Jerry Brown was then governor. And the next day, we had the National Guard in Fairfax with 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 earth movers and deuce and halves. And and, you know, they came to our rescue because we were just unprepared. There's no way Fairfax is going to handle the the amount of flooding and landslides that occurred. Jump over to roadways. GL 12, it says 18 feet of roadway. Fairfax requires 20 feet of roadway for its private road. So if we if we drop that to 18 feet, are we saying 18 feet is now a sufficient roadway width for future development? That's a good, just a question. Again, GL 12, fire hardening of this existing private structures. So I'm wondering what the fire hardening is. I know Ross, you know, Ross Valley, the the firewise came and inspected our home. And they commented that we have a shingle home and we should look to potential fire hardening. But I'm not sure what the fire hardening is. Does that mean taking the shingles off and putting stucco or or some kind of a hard material on it? We have emergency sirens in Fairfax and they work well. But the problem is folks don't know what they mean when they go off. So we need voiceover commands for emergency sirens. San Francisco tests their emergency siren with voiceover commands once a week. Back to fires. We can't evacuate the Cascades now. As we add a number of new homes and ADUs, the up and coming SB nine implementation to convert single family lots to fourplexes in wooey zones puts the entire Cascades into a potential campfire situation. You know, it just, it's really difficult to try to get, say, you know, comment in the three, three minutes or so. But, you know, you've got a real difficult task and I don't envy you. So so good luck, but here's your, here's your start. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for for participating and being here and giving us your historical perspective. Let's see, we've got another Mark Bell.
Hi, Mimi. Okay, just to go along with what Frank was saying. They they did, we paid for hydrological studies that have been been going on since the 2005, 2006 flood. They did all kinds of models, all that stuff is done. So I hope you're not going to repeat. What was it called? Some joint powers agreement, Plan Nine from Outer Space. I forget the name of it, but that work's been done. But really, when you're talking about evacuation from a fire, you really think people are going to go to Doc Edgar Park and stop there? Or they're going to go to Cat Elliott Nature Preserve and stop there if there's a fire? You've got to be kidding me. People are going to be trying to get out of town. And if you're going to, and if you have a town council who doesn't want to stop, and I guess you're part of it, putting in 300, 400, 500 units, you're just can really condemning everybody here to die. Let's just be real about it because nobody's getting out of town. A fender bender totally chokes traffic. What do you think a fire will do? People are going to die. And you can think about, okay, well, you have this forest fire. Just to give you some actual perspective, I have a friend, he got burned out. His wife insisted that they live. They were living on a farm outside of Oroville. The fire was 25 miles away. She told him, we're leaving. He said, it's not going to be here for three or four days. She said, we're leaving in an hour or I'm leaving without you. That night, their whole place burned down. It was, the fire was jumping over ridges, jumping over lakes, jumping over creeks from the wind. People are not going to be sitting in a place where there are trees. So I mean, you know, I don't know a better word besides hypocrisy. How can you think about putting in three, four, 500 living units, increasing the population by maybe 25% and expecting that people are actually going to be able to get out of here if there's a disaster? I mean, that's the reality. And it's nice that there's firewise and it's nice that, you know, people are doing siting and all that. Yeah, because what else can you do? But the reality is you can't add homes to where we are. It's not designed for it. It was never built for it. And the transportation grid in and out of town is basically inadequate. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. I don't see anybody else's hand at this point. So unless somebody else raises their hand right now, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And we're back to where I started before the public hearing, which was to ask for the commissioner's input on the question that Mr. James asked us about identifying additional factors for us to consider in the safety element. Commissioner Jansen.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, we heard a couple of good things there. This is a complicated task. I, there's one thing that it is mentioned, but I think it is not emphasized enough in the document. And there's also changes to it that make it a little bit more complicated. And that relates to parking. Parking is, of course, already difficult from a user standpoint because we live in the hillside. But it is also, I think, very important in case of evacuation. We've all seen just a regular service truck being stuck because a car or something is in the way. Having said that, I think there are a lot of situations in Fairfax where it is a little unclear whether it is okay to park or not to park, where does the road stop, where does it not stop? So that does not help making it obvious for people what to do. So I think that entire chapter needs more, needs expansion. And then moreover, with the current changes in the document, it actually gets a little bit fuzzier than it used to be. So I'll give an example. I think this happens mostly on, that is page 54 of the PDF, which would be page GL 12. First of all, so that's policy S three dot one dot three. First of all, it's mentioned in here, something that struck me, as funding becomes available. I think that's true for everything in general plan. So to stipulate that that working on parking and how that should work, I think that shouldn't be embarrassing. That should, we should strike that. I mean, it's typical true for everything. And then at the very end of that chapter, that would be page, it's still GL 12, that's interesting. PDF page 56. The last section, three dot one dot three dot 10 is modified. And the responsibility there is the one that concerns me because the responsibility is slipped and first put onto the Ross Valley Fire Department. And this is a section that talks about enforcing parking restrictions and how roads and things need to work, particularly on red flag days. Of course, the Ross Valley Fire Department will have the final say on how that should work. I understand that. But I think foremost, in the first place, the city, the local police department, who knows all those roads and drives around there, should inform the public and do something. Secondly, the town should look in coordination with the police, find those spots where things are simply unclear and nobody exactly knows what they need to do. So I think that's a priority because of what I said in the beginning. It's very easy for one single abruptly parked car to block an entire street. And with, as we mentioned, if a particular area needs to be evacuated, it's going to be a challenge to get those cars out. Anyway, that, so in general, the 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 issue of parking and how to make changes, and I know that's costly to make changes. But the issue of parking, I think, needs more attention in the documents than the way it's currently stated. That was my comment.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from commissioners on the additional factors to consider? Commissioner Green.
Hi, I'm muted, okay. I, you know, I think that's a good point about the parking. Also, I kind of noted that myself and thinking, you know, when when it says enforce parking restrictions on roads with pavement width under 18 feet. Yeah, there, you know, we we can do things, just maybe even be more specific. And it says, I don't know why responsible, my question here really is, why is responsibility, police department, fire department, et cetera, crossed out? Because I think some, the police could look at this situation and say, yeah, you know, we could, we could restrict parking. It could be like from May through October that you cannot park here and, you know, we can have cars towed for that. Or, you know, because that's the fire season, something like that could be done. I I would like to see a little more specificity, I guess, is what I'm saying, on what, you know, what exactly the restrictions, you know, might be suggested. And something coming out of here, going into the, something coming out of this work and looking to the future needs to suggest changes like that to departments like the police. And and I think, you know, that's, that's just one thing. But throughout, I mean, my initial comment was, don't have any limiting language. So that's, that's something to be careful of is is anytime throughout the work that we have language that might limit or or condition things where they should be broader. Because if anything, especially with fires, we we know there's, you know, there's a broader concern now maybe than there was 10 years ago because of the actuality of it. Earthquakes don't change much, but fires seem to have.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Yeah. Well, I'll just see if there are any other commissioners, Commissioner Fergoso.
We're still on comments or potential additions to the work of the housing element. And later, I'll get back to overall impressions about the proposed draft housing element so far.
Safety element?
The safety element, yes, ma'am, thank you. One of my comments, and it was already mentioned, that the maps are being worked on. And I, I, I'm not sure if the problem is my eyesight or the fact that the legends on the map are at like point one font. Even when I stretch out my fingers as much as I can, I still can't read them. I think part of the problem is that the text is fuzzy. The text and the maps and the copies we received are not only small but fuzzy. I've not had a chance to look at them on a webpage. I'm sure they're better because you can zoom out more. But let's make sure they're not fuzzy. I I do appreciate sometime back, we talked about asking that the one-way out streets be assessed for emergency egress. But also, we have a number of narrow two-way streets. And I'm thinking specifically in my neighborhood. I'm not sure this is covered in the discussion of one-way out streets, but we had a fire up on the hill last year sometime. And I noticed that because we have a two-way and very narrow street that curves with parking all along one side, the fire engines and the big fire trucks were trying to come up the hill right in front of my house while the cars were trying to come down the hill or around the hill to see what was going on and stopping the fire engines and the fire trucks from getting up to the fire zone. So that's something we should definitely take a look at that. And perhaps larger legends and less fuzzy maps. One other thing is, I believe Frank Edgar talked about the fact that we are in a joint authority with the town of Ross. But I just was reading in today's newspaper, I think, today's But I just was reading in today's newspaper, I think, today's or yesterday's, that the town of Ross is going to demolish their fire station on Sir Francis Drake for a new development. And so I don't know how that is going to impact our own fire station. I understand the staff there, a couple will come to Fairfax, a couple will go either to Larksburg or another one of the Ross stations, but that's something I'm not sure is quite anticipated in the safety element. And, uh, those are my kind of questions or suggestions for improvement.
Thank you, Commissioner Fregoso. Other comments on additional factors to consider in the safety element? Um, I guess for my part, because I don't see anybody else's hand raised, I'll uh, mention that I tend to agree with a number of the uh, public comments we heard regarding, um, well, I think the, the one, you know, obviously if the, the creek goes through my house, that's my priority. But, but, uh, no, as, as Chair of the Planning Commission, I do think the focus on the town hall issues and the culvert, uh, need to be looked at afresh. Um, I think the issue, the concerns we heard about, um, the, uh, evacuation at night during the power outages and the need to somehow guide people and, you know, chaotic circumstances to where they're supposed to be going is something that, uh, you know, I really appreciate that suggestion, the, um, you know, so again, I, I agree with a number of the thoughts that, that were raised by, uh, our public commenters. Um, and, uh, so I guess I'll leave it at that. Um, and move on to Richard, if he should review that second information on the groups, I think was what the second bullet was. And you're on mute.
Yes, thank you. It was information on the groups such as firewise, firesafe, um, neighborhood response groups, and of course, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. What their roles are, if any, anyone has anything to add to what we've put in already about those groups.
Do any of the commissioners want to weigh in on, on that item? That question? Well, it sounds like we have nothing to say about that one. Um, all right.
I'll say one thing. I mean, thank, thank for these people, uh, doing this work. You know, that's, that's one thing I'd like to say about these groups. Um, I can't imagine a better, uh, uh, you know, a better bunch of people, uh, working on it, uh, and helping us out, you know? Um, it's hard to, I, I think we want to, you know, it, um, back in, um, nineteen eighty-something, um, I will say this, that, that the fire department designated one or two of their guys to go around to neighborhoods and actually have public meetings where there was a notice and people gathered at a house, you know, yeah, that, and I, I think they found a house at the top of our street to, to do it. And, and really have a discussion and an awareness kind of lecture like you had in sixth grade, you know, when you recalled in elementary school and the fire department did a demonstration about how when your dad leaves gas next to the heater in the garage, it could blow up. You know, so I thi- I think that's an idea of who else, uh, community resources, actually firemen. I mean, they're the ones who know the science. Um, you know, and the question was raised, what is hardening? Uh, you know, some, right, exactly. I think that they probably have examples. I bet the fire department has sort of little demo examples they can bring out. They used to do these wonderful little fairs at the winter carnival at the, uh, the school at, uh, you know, uh, the school and, um, you know, they had a little snow, fake snow set up, and there was a fire truck there and a little, a little room, and you can go in there and they would sort of, you know, blow smoke, and this is how it feels and, you know, kind of give a demo. And I think that would be a, a group to get into here, especially with public demonstrations or public hearings, um, fire department. And, you know, they know about a lot of stuff. Um, and maybe even public works, you know, our own public works people could actually get out there and talk to the public and and let them know. So that's the kind of thing, just sort of, uh, um, let's say, uh, department engagement with the public. That would be a great.
Ben?
Um, well, I just wanted to loop back to one of the comments made earlier. It's just, uh, questions about uh, home hardening, um, and roles of groups. And, uh, also the Ross Fire Station. And one of the things that, uh, Richard and I, uh, are coming to the realization in looking at things like this is that it's really kind of up to the town and its citizenry to do much of the preparation uh, for fire events and disasters, uh, because if you look at the current fire station, most of the time it's staffed by two people. With the closing of the fire station, um, I believe that staffing will increase to three, which is actually a good thing for the town because it, uh, increases options for, uh, emergency response. Um, but even under a three people at a fire station scenario, right, some, some wildfire that starts at night, we get an earthquake during the six month or eight month now dry season, uh, roads are blocked. Emergency responders extremely limited in what we could, under the best of circumstances, hope they could do. So this is, this underscores the, the fact that the type of preparation that's going to make a meaningful difference, and especially with vulnerable populations, uh, who we know, again, th- these brutal experiences that we're gaining from these major wildland fires is the group that ends up dying disproportionately in these fires are elderly, uh, people with ambulatory uh, issues and, and limited ability to evacuate. So again, this loops right back to community groups and preparation, uh, and resources that are put there and raising consciousness uh, about things like what it, wh- what is entailed with home hardening? Um, what, what can we do with our vegetation? Uh, because in, in the final analysis, i- it can make a really significant difference. And we also have an incredible resource in town, Ray Moritz, who is hard to get a hold of. Um, but as one of the leading experts i- in, in the whole region on fire behavior, fire ecology, um, how you deal with shaded fuel breaks. Um, I would love to see, uh, those conversations, um, and that information and that knowledge uh, being disseminated to the community and it being put into practice in a meaningful way. So those are just thoughts and, and reactions to some of the comments I've heard, heard tonight in this and, and relating it specifically to groups.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, Commissioner Jansen.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I had to gather my thoughts there for a second to answer the second question, uh, Mr. James. Um, but I think there, there is one thing. So we've seen over the last years, I should say, should, should say, uh, an increased interest of, of everybody in the community in fire safety. And so we have these NRGs, we have firewise communities that are sprouting up. Um, the report acknowledges that they are important, but it does not give them a formal role. And so I would think because there is so much interest and because it is a on-the-ground issue, I think it would be good if they get a formal role or get an authority somehow assigned to them so they become part of the fabric and all these documents. Um, I did not see that in there, but as I said, I see the acknowledgement, but not that, um, anchor point that I think would really enforce them. That would not enforce them, would really, uh, make them stronger and feel appreciated. Um, that's the thing that came to mind.
Commissioner Jansen, other comments on additional community resources that we should be including or reflecting in the safety element? We will go to the next one then. Uh, comments on other revisions or new programs that should be incorporated into the safety element? Uh, do any of the commissioners want to weigh in on that issue? Well, I'll, uh, say something that, uh, I've already said, uh, to Mr. James, um, which is that I have concerns about our ability to perform uh, the, the programs that are outlined uh, already, given our track record from performing the, uh, programs in the previous version of the safety element. And, uh, you know, I think the, um, the question about prioritization is key. Uh, you know, I think, you know, we've got four general goals for this element, you know, minimize our risks to the various types of, uh, dangers that we are facing. And, uh, you know, it's hard to prioritize flood versus fire versus earthquake because each one of those can be absolutely devastating to different areas of the community depending on, you know, the circumstances. And, you know, we want to do all of these things, but, uh, you know, when when the General Plan Implementation Committee put together, uh, the programs that came out of the previous general plan, uh, you know, it was pretty clear that, um, the, the, the list for any particular group within the town, whether it was the Planning Commission or the Planning Department or the Open Space Committee, you know, those are the ones I have experience with. But, you know, it's overwhelming when you're dealing with, uh, limited staff, time and resources, uh, volunteers with, you know, various limitations on our time to, uh, expect that these goals are something more than aspirations, that they're actual implementable, doable group of projects. And so, uh, I really want to ask that we roll up our sleeves and really think hard and, and get the, the community's input at this workshop on, you know, how we can best put our limited resources as a community uh, towards minimizing these general risks. And I, I agree that it's a, a really big lift here because, you know, aspirationally, we want to do so much, uh, but, you know, we, uh, on this planning commission have seen that there were, uh, projects that were assigned to us that, you know, when we met to prioritize a couple of years ago, uh, you know, I don't even think we've, we've managed to implement much of what we prioritize for ourselves. So uh, I have some real concerns about this being, uh, doable and, and things being doable. So I'll get off my high horse. Commissioner Green.
And while in that regard, um, you know, the, I, you can participate in things in your life that are volunteer things that are also a lot of fun. And I can give you an example. So I'm looking at, at, uh, let me see where, okay, let me just tell you where I'm, where I'm going here with this. Uh, I'm looking at page GL twelve. Um, let's see, program S dash three dot one dot two dot eight. Develop a per, a defen- defensible space vegetation program that includes the clearing or thinning of non-fire resistant vegetation, et cetera. So, um, the, uh, kind of the rain flood situation of the nineteen eighties caused part of Muir Woods to get seriously eroded. There was an advertisement in the paper for volunteers to go and help replant, you know, help with the rangers and replant native um, plants in those flood, uh, you know, ruined areas. Um, and there were tons of people, tons of people showed up in the, and, and it was still pretty muddy. Um, there was a lot of rain that time. Um, and it was fun. And it was fun. Okay, we had, we, you know, we actually saw salmon swim, swim up a stream in Muir Woods, okay? Because you're there so long all day, really. Um, it was over a weekend. So that's the kind of thing we could do to implement um, defensible space vegetation programs is take a, take a community advertise saying, you know, who would like to, you know, dig in the mud, you know, who would like to get rid of, help us weed, weed the stuff? I've weeded acres of, of, um, with a team, uh, you know, acres of cotton field. You have no idea what you have to do before you harvest cotton. You've got to weed it. You've got to get rid of the, the really bad weeds that grow between the cotton. So the machines can come through and, you know, rip it all up and, uh, get the real cotton. So there's, it's fun. It's get your hands dirty. It's, it's great work. Um, people love gardening. So that's something I suggest is volunteerism to get things done like that. And I know there's volunteers who wa- walked all over Fairfax looking for trails to improve. Um, you know, people love getting out and doing things. So anything in this plan that requires that kind of work, you know, we can combine our wonderful forester, as mentioned, um, with he could instruct people, he could pick areas and say, you know, here's an area, we need, this is really bad. We need to kind of like weed this, let's say. And, and let's get some volunteers. Why not? You know, that's just an idea. Sorry. It worked for me. I loved, uh, the Muir Woods experience, you know, you it's a once in a lifetime kind of thing. And, uh, your kids look and you, you know, you tell your grandkids, wow, I, I saved our town by helping weed, you know, up there on the hillside. So it's a, it's a good program. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Fregoso.
Thank you, Mimi. I think that, uh, I, I would agree with the comments you made and Commissioner Green's in terms of uh, while it's an impressive draft safety element, every single feature in it that is being proposed, every activity, every program is important. However, uh, you know, there's only so many of us, we could count on our fingers. Uh, there's a lot of people doing work out there. Uh, the firewise groups around town, there are local and regional people and, and, uh, fire programs and surveys and the fire department has done an incredible job coming out to almost everyone's home in Fairfax, I think, to do an assessment of, of the hardiness of our landscaping and, and our, our units. That is critical. And having people really understand what hardening and firewise landscaping and what can be done uh, about flood mitigations. And there are organizations out there. We don't have to do everything ourselves. There's resources for conservation development. There's the county's storm drain and, and flood people. Uh, I think what we might want to do is take a number of these proposed programs, I do I do notice some duplication, some similarities, some duplications. And, and maybe we could take a look at where two or three of these can get combined into something more succinct and more doable. Perhaps a prioritization of all of these. I haven't counted them, but my God, there's 20 pages of actions to be taken. So that would be, that would be one suggestion. I would also add, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place, but there was talk about micro grids being developed for Fairfax. I think that would make a huge difference so that people would be able to communicate. I was without power for several days during that big deluge. No wifi, no cell phone, no TV for God's sakes, no, no lights. So if we could incorporate, if not in the safety element, perhaps in other elements, micro grids. But I, I would like to say, one thing I really appreciate is that, and it's important for the community to understand the importance of the safety element and how it informs and works hand in hand with the housing element. And that I appreciate the, the effort and the thought that's being put into, as many of us on the commission have requested, that the safety element provide health and safety standards, flood and firewise practices and standards that can be incorporated into the housing element to assist us to whatever development occurs, that it happened in a manner that is consistent with our safety element. And I, I will leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fregoso. Commissioner Green.
Well, you know, one of the, one of the problems we have, I, I think on informing, you know, informing the housing element update is sort of what Frank Egger brought up is, is the, you know, the, the crossover between the housing element trying to comply with the RENA requirement and the safety element that's looking into each neighborhood and its hazardous situations. And I think it's pretty obvious to me that the hazardous situations need to inform the housing element quite a bit about what those are. And as the housing element update continues and the odds and then, you know, small units and things like that that we want because we have the state requirement are, you know, updated as well, the safety element needs to be referred back to all the time, I think, to find out, for example, situations like Cascade for evacuation. Or I mean, all these maps are, all of these maps, I think, below here are very relevant to the housing element. And, and of course, realize that, you know, in part of that housing element, and you know, Ben, you could elucidate on this. We're, we're looking into areas of Fairfax where we, you know, where those RENA compliance issues can really be concentrated. And so these maps are helpful. And I helping identify, you know, for example, you know, whether the wall property should be developed with little tiny houses or something. You know, so I think that's a really important aspect of all of this. That's why I said, thank you so much. Because this helps with all, all of this. And there's a huge informing element there, I think. So, you know, and keep, keep that in mind. Everything here is informing.
Thanks, Commissioner Green. And I guess that sort of jumps us into the last question that we're supposed to answer, which is, or weigh in on, which is how should the safety element inform the housing element? And so I think Commissioner Green's already started that discussion. But I'm wondering if other commissioners have thoughts or comments on, on that area. Commissioner Jansen.
Yeah, I think I concur with Commissioner Green. I think the, the driving force is the safety element. I think so far, we've looked at arena numbers. We've looked at what you possibly can do with the housing elements. But under all of that is the safety issue. And I think it is much more tricky than people might have realized. So, yeah, that, that should be governing that, you know, there's no point in trying to develop anything if you cannot do it safely. What the consequence of that will be is hard to predict. But so, yeah, I completely concur that the safety element should be a prerequisite to what you can do in the next step.
Yeah, I mean, that's an interesting comment. And I think we, we're all struggling with the you know, the dichotomy between, you know, trying to develop a housing element that would, you know, comply with the RENA requirements while at the same time being conscious of the need to ensure the safety of our citizenry. You know, citizens, non-citizens, workers, everybody. And you know, I think that, you know, from my perspective, the safety element ought to trump the RENA requirements. Because how can we in good conscience make recommendations if we have concerns about the safety of, you know, our lives? So I feel that this is absolutely critical to identifying what is doable when we get to the, to the housing element. And, you know, if we're, if we're gonna make a good faith effort to meet the RENA numbers. You know, it's absolutely vital that the data and information that we collect in preparation of the safety element update be reliable and you know, and sort of form a, a a good basis for the decisions that we make in the housing element. And, you know, frankly, I don't know how we're gonna reconcile these competing needs. So I really do think that, you know, in order not to put the cart before the horse, we have to be very prudent about what we're looking at with the safety element. And I don't know, Commissioner Jansen, if you put your hand down and back up again, or if it's just still up there.
No, it's still up there. Sorry.
Take up all the the oxygen on the call. But, you know, I am gonna have some questions for you, Ben, about the upcoming workshops and how we can ensure that the, and I know I'm jumping ahead, but you know, how are we gonna ensure that we're really maximizing the time we have with the public in a, in a, in a meaningful way? I don't know. I'm not really giving you a concrete set of, of thoughts, but I'm rambling a little.
Well, it, obviously your commission and staff share the notion that given our awareness and it's only increasing about the, the critical aspect of safety relating to future development in Fairfax, and not just in Fairfax, but i- in Marin as a whole, but in particular Fairfax. And because of what we know about evacuation risks and what we will find with studies that are occurring and how, under a logical land use capability and constraints basis, you would go from that to directing housing. How much, where, et cetera. And it seems like it's backwards. Now, the, the workshop on Saturday is gonna focus on housing opportunity sites and what the housing element is all about. And as you can see from what we're presenting to your commission and to the public about the safety element, that this is very much work in progress and we're trying to get direction. And we're hearing about this, this linkage in reducing, or trying to address some of the dichotomy aspects of that. I'm also very aware and supportive of your commission's and the, the Housing Element Subcommittee who looked at safety element drafts and drafted and, and said, hey, what are we gonna implement here? That, that we don't want it to be a wish list. We've seen, you know, what gets done and mostly doesn't get done when you just throw out a laundry list of these items. And I completely agree that unless you prioritize, you're likely to end up with, you know, no real sense of where you start and where you hope to end. And that there's always many more good ideas than any realistic effort is going to achieve. So I, I, I don't know how we get there tonight. I, I think what I would like to suggest is maybe the commission provides staff with a top 10 list of the policies and programs that we've outlined in the safety element. And that, and it may be start kind of globally. For example, if you think that the fire safety should be the nu- number one priority, which kind of seems like it ought to be, although the, the one-two punch of an earthquake leading to fires is really kind of your worst case scenario. But, and also some of the emerging aspects that staff is referencing. And I'd like to point out that these temporary refuge areas were not something that planning staff or the consultants came up with. That's what Marin FireSafe has. And we looked at that and wanted to bring that to the commission and the public's attention for the reasons that has already been pointed out tonight. And that's something that our town arborist has also weighed in on. Something like Doc Egger Park needs help if that's gonna even function on a last resort temporary emergency basis. And for the people further up Cascade, you know, is this something, again, it's, it's, it's a very difficult thing to do to, to say, okay, what do you do when, you know, even if the fire isn't at night, it could be day turning into night. Because that's typically what they experience in these Holocaust type conditions. So, you know, how do we try to ensure to the greatest extent possible, public safety? And, and maybe looking at the, these temporary refuge areas, especially for the areas in town. And it's not just upper Cascade. I mean, when I discussed it with planning staff, they were pointing that the top of these hills is, are a long ways, the houses there are a long ways from safety. And it may be facing very adverse conditions in evacuating to safety. So that's, you know, that's one thing is, is that moving forward, relying on your commission's intimate knowledge of the community. What's important, what's achievable, giving us your top 10 list, which will provide staff with something that we could take to the council in December, on December 15th, where we're gonna be doing a meeting that evaluates both the results from the workshop this Saturday and subsequent public input with some of the engagement tools that we'll be rolling out at that time. And then also this idea of the safety element. And, you know, it may be one of these recognizing that we have some trade-offs that we have to be willing to consider. An example would be, and, and former Mayor Egger alluded to the fact that, you know, somebody said that a siren is like a barking dog. They tell you that something's up, but they don't really tell you what to do. I don't know if a siren's gonna reach everybody, but I think we need to really think about how we do reach people in meaningful ways. And, you know, that could include better cell phone access, recognizing that a lot of people don't even have landlines anymore. I, I've also thought, and, and I know this is going a little wide afield, but when it comes to flood safety and, you know, we were one foot from flooding at Town Hall with our October storm, right? So absolutely parched land conditions, no saturation, came a foot from flooding on one storm event in October. I mean, obviously an unprecedented October storm, probably about double the worst or the highest rate of rainfall we've had in October. And, you know, we have to accept that that may be the future that we experience on an increasing basis, just these increasingly extreme erratic unpredictable events. How do we create a resilient community? I know that the Lefty Gomez detention basin concept went down, pardon the expression, in flames the last time it was considered. And there were some serious faults with that. But I also know that one of the things that kept us from flooding in October storm was they deployed the Sunnyside Nursery Detention Basin. And I hope people drove by there to check that out. Because I sure did. And I was like, wow, there's that water that didn't come sluicing down through Fairfax Creek and potentially creating those impacts. So maybe it's time to revisit Lefty Gomez under the context that the town would support, you know. I mean, one of the things that they never really looked at was a way to underground that so that you didn't lose use of that field during, during high, you know, during wet weather events. I'm just throwing this out to say that, you know, if we're looking at achievable things, it's also important to leverage resources that are available out there. And, and Flood District Number Nine has those type of resources. Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority has those resources. And it's, and leveraging those resources so that within the very limited resources we have here in Fairfax, we can actually make a meaningful improvement in our safety. And as I said, I think fire, fire is probably the numero uno thing. So that's, I'll, I'll just throw that out. And, and, you know, given the time constraints, and that can be a good and a bad thing. But it does force us to make decisions in a, in a relatively short period of time. We need that input from your commission. And I appreciate the public comment tonight. It's, you know, typical that it's only certain involved community leaders of various auspices in the town who help us in our deliberations and guide those discussions. And it's much appreciated and it's hope that as we continue to go forward, we can figure out a way to integrate into people's busy lives to get viewpoints of the entire community. And I think what I'd like to do is maybe look at our public engagement tools and see as we go forward into this 2022 timeframe, if we can put out more questionnaires or, or maybe simply through the town website, but ask the public what they want, where they see the priorities are. The top 10 things that are probably, you know, the only realistic thing. Get town council direction on this because as we know from our planning commission and staff list of priorities, they don't go very far if, if the town council doesn't sign on board with that. So, and this is part of what we can achieve with the safety element discussion integrated with our housing element discussion. So that's it for me.
Well, so I just want to ask you, are you asking for the planning commissioners to do a little bit of homework and send you a list of their top 10 safety element? These, this draft updated version of the safety element, which would be our top 10 programs, our highest priority programs. And when would you like us to? Top ten programs, our highest priority programs, and when would you like us to finish that homework? Bye.
Um, I would like to see that done probably by the end of Thanksgiving weekend because. Uh, we're coming, we know we're coming back to the town council uh, on the fifteenth. And so we need time to uh, look at what we have in our this. Very preliminary safety element and maybe uh, suggest. Where we could integrate or or focus uh, what we we have in this draft.
So, um, in order to uh, not in, you know, violate any of the Brown Act. I would then ask each of the commissioners individually to send these priorities. To uh, Ben and not copy each other, just send them directly to Ben. Um, and Ben, I might even throw that out there to members of the public. Uh, including some of the uh, the folks who do tend to pay attention to what we do here. Uh, to send you their top ten priorities too, because it's not just. Uh, the planning commissioners that I think uh, can help inform that and and provide some of the uh. Priorities and if and if members of the public. Think that there are programs that are not included in this latest draft that should instead be included, include those in your. Uh, priorities. Commissioner Pregoso, did you have a?
If I can piggyback on your comment, that might also be a good idea for the Saturday meeting. Because to eh eh have people also. Tell us what their highest priorities might be of this laundry list of programs.
Well, I I don't want to derail the Saturday meeting. I know that I brought it up because. The question was, how does the safety element inform the housing element, right? I I really want to focus on the safety element programs. Uh, and Ben, obviously, if there's a way that you want to work that into the workshop, you know, do whatever you need to do there. But uh, I guess just an independent ask for people to send you directly. Their top ten list.
Why don't we do this? Uh, we can, we can throw in a quick poll and maybe break it out by the main. Uh, uh, safety program topical areas, so fire, uh, geologic slash seismic. Uh, flood and just get a sense of where people are. We think we know the answer, but you know, it doesn't hurt to ask. Uh, and 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 uh, we could, among the participants, we could ask that. We could also with the Fairfax Speaks website. Put up a s- a questionnaire, um, and especially with the commission's uh, sort of leadership. On some of the priority directions. And you, for example, Commissioner Jansen talked about parking. And we know that uh, the lack of adequate road width uh, could be a real serious problem and and I I've seen it discussed where. You know, maybe during red flag fire, uh, we say you cannot park in certain sections of the streets. Um, you know, another topic that I, when I worked in uh, Corner Madera. Uh, they actually Chevron parking areas on Christmas Tree Hill and that's kind of an equivalent to certain uh, hillside areas in the town. And that was a very uh, controversial painstaking program. It involved police, fire and town staff. But the result was, at the end of it, was uh, uh, a consensus on where people should park. And that may be appropriate, given that we know that with our narrow winding streets and the sort of free-for-all that we have. And I've even heard that when the town has tried to designate parking areas, people go out there with a can of paint. Come up with their own version. Well, guess what? We can GPS that. So, somebody can do their own version and we could figure that out pretty readily. Um, but you know, that's an example of something that might make a really significant improvement because. I've heard the horror stories about that fire up on Crest. And people driving on sidewalks and knocking mirrors off cars and the fire department, and that was just one house on fire. Uh, so you know, and and that kind of my understanding was it blew up on next door and. People were kind of in a panic evacuation mode and they didn't need to be. And so that gets back to this. You know, who's communicating what, how quickly and how reliable is it? And could it actually be fairly counterproductive, which it seemed like it was? And so that's part of the idea of. Learning how to communicate more effectively and what to listen to and making sure that. You know, somebody that we can rely on is getting information out quickly so that you don't have. A bunch of people trying to evacuate when the real need is to get fire apparatus. So, anyway, those are the type of things that. We will, uh, we we could definitely get that on the Fairfax Speaks website with some detailed survey questions. And the more I think about that, the more I think I'll 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 debrief with Richard. Uh, and and come up with some questions that we could put together relatively quickly. We don't necessarily need an immediate response on that, but what the heck if we can. Debrief from this Saturday and then post something up uh, as quickly as possible on that, maybe we can. Also integrate some of the public responses uh, in what we present to the council on December fifteenth.
Okay, and um, I I do want to kind of get to our next agenda item. Um, and of course, the full lunar eclipse. Um, but uh. Would would you be able to reach out directly to Commissioner Gonzalez Parver and ask her to weigh in because uh. You know, I don't know if she'll, she's been watching or what. And then. Does anybody else have any other comments on this particular item? Commissioner Fregoso?
Can we take a break? It's ten o'clock.
Break, a break.
A quickie, it's ten o'clock.
All right, be back here at ten oh five. Thank you. Alrighty, we are at one oh five.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ben, and thank you, Robert. For the uh. For the um. Previous item. Let's go to the next item, which is the uh. Equity-related text amendments to the general plan. Um, Ben, are you delivering this? Okay.
Yeah, and let me, uh, I would like to uh, to our web mistress to look. Um, I don't see, oh, there she is. Uh, uh, can we please promote Shelley Hamilton to panelist? Um, she'll be giving the bulk of the presentation. Um, so I'll just briefly. Introduce this by saying that Fairfax supports social justice in efforts to address a legacy. That in some cases included exclusionary uh, and indeed racist practices. And that former Fairfax Planning Commissioner Shelley Hamilton, who was part of the group that worked on the current general plan. Um, has become concerned about uh, use of the word. Character in the general plan, believing that it has uh, racist connotations and roots. And um, the town council uh. Had this item that your commission is looking at tonight on the agenda at their October twentieth meeting. And uh, recognizing that the planning commission in the typical sequence of things does review general plan amendments. Um, they continued it and directed the planning commission to review this item. Uh, and at this meeting, uh, and that this brought be brought back before the town council on their December first meeting. So your commission is going to get one shot at this. Um, so uh. Shelley is here to make a presentation on on behalf of the changes that she is recommending. I would also note that she provided corrections uh, to the general plan text. Uh, I forwarded that to your commission. It was posted on the uh, website uh, for the this commission meeting. Uh, under the uh, packet uh, for item four, so people, uh, there's references to these corrections. You can go online and and just pull that up uh, from from that webpage. Um, so I will now turn this over to Shelley Hamilton.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna do share my screen, very short overview. Let me know, um. Make sure you can see that. Can everybody see that on their screen? The presentation?
Yes.
Great, all right, so. Glad to be here and it's very nice to reconnect with the planning commission after all of these years and see some. Familiar faces of those of you who are still hanging in there. Um, so it's great to see you and I really appreciate your consideration for this topic. Um, so just in case some of you or the public attending tonight haven't had a chance to see any of the prior presentations. Very short overview to share with you. I'm sure you'll see by the end of this presentation that this is actually one of the. Uh, least complicated things that you all are going to be dealing with over the next um, eight months to year. With the safety element that I just listened to you talk about and the housing element. So. Um, this is going to be a fairly brief overview and it shouldn't be, should be um, fairly straightforward. So a little bit about the start of the journey and how this, where this all all came from. Um, as you can see, that's a picture there of the super committee. That drafted the current general plan that you all have been discussing. I was co-chair of the planning commission at that time and involved. In the language that we now have in the plan, um, including the terms community and neighborhood character, fully supported it, was very um. Uh, loved the town, felt like, you know, what we had in our town was, is very special. Um, and at the time, I was not aware of the connection between systemic racism and land use planning. Back in twenty eighteen, um, after our general plan uh, had been approved. Uh, Richard Rothstein, who's a university professor and an author affiliated with the Economic Policy Institute. Came to Marin and made a series of presentations on his book, The Color of Law. And that is where I first learned about the connection between the history of racism and land use planning and got very. Interested in the subject and um, wanted to learn more. So that was the start of my personal journey on this topic and having learned. What I did since then, I began to feel that I had a responsibility. Um, to call out and where possible to undo the instances of structural racism that that I. As a white person and as a planning commissioner had been involved in perpetuating, and I'll explain more about that. Um, shortly. So I, while I knew that I did not intentionally, um. I was not intentionally trying to perpetuate segregation and a racist system. Um, I nonetheless did feel a sense of responsibility for doing something about it once I knew that I had participated in perpetuating. Um, a system that I learned about in The Color of Law. So knowing what I know now. Um, I thought it was very important uh, for us all to understand the historical context. That created the current segregation arrangements in our communities and that while as individuals like myself. We may not have intended to promote these discriminatory systems. I do think we have a responsibility. So that's where my journey started. And. So here's, here is a a timeline. Um, that's also, I think, important piece of context in understanding this proposal, that actually it's not just. One person's project. I may have uh, started it by learning what I could, inquiring and having conversations about it. And bringing my awareness and my understanding uh, to various community members. But I'm also honored to be able to host this conversation really with you because it's important to acknowledge and respect the context. Of the hard work of many people who came before me. And the larger and very difficult racial justice and social equity conversations in which this is embedded. It's not just a a single standalone lone person um, bringing a proposal. Um, it's been about eight months in the process to date and has involved four four different um, bodies, town councils, commissions, subcommittees. The Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee. As well as numerous conversations with individuals who are now forming the Ross Valley United Community Group. So a lot of people have had input and have um. Worked with me. I feel like I have just done a lot of the legwork, having been on the planning commission and understanding how. Resolutions are written and um, understanding where to look in the general plan and how to deal with it. I did a lot of the administrative legwork. But it really was um, with a lot of input from other community members. So a little bit about, again, this term. Uh, character of the commu- character, neighborhood character, community character, where it came from, what I have learned. So while we know now that explicitly racist practices like redlining and discriminatory lending and racial covenants, they're no longer legal. They were created to create segregated communities and have had the impact on the communities that we currently live in. These were explicit tools that were outlawed. Um, but they tilted the tilted the playing field and they segregated the communities that we now live in. Um, and they were then intentionally held in place, that tilted playing field in the segregation. Once the explicit racist practices were um, deemed unlawful. The new way of holding that segregation in place was the advent of this phrase, community or neighborhood character. So. It was not explicitly racist, so it wasn't unlawful, but nonetheless, it continued to hold intentionally or not. This racially unequal reality in place that um, was segregated communities. And as Rothman points out, that it doesn't really matter if a policy or practice is or is not intentionally discriminatory. If in practice, it results in disparate impacts or racially unequal outcomes or segregation. It is still part of a structurally racist system. So in more recent term, in more recent times. By myself in creating the general plan and in others in continuing to use the term. Community character or preserving neighborhood character, we are inadvertently perpetuating. This segregated and um, institutional racism. And so while I do not believe that. We as individuals. Are necessarily racist, we can still. Be involved in and perpetuate institutional racism through our acts and our unconscious bias and our unknowing. Um, so now that I know how this term was created, um. I, and I know that when it's used, it's not intended to mean, you know, preserving the segregated whiteness character of Fairfax. Um, but knowing that that it was originally created intentionally to do that, I felt that we ought to. Um, take it out of our general plan. And as you all know very well, the general plan is also intended to be our civic agreement and our community constitution. It's a very important expression of our collective identity, so if we want to be an inclusive and welcoming community. Our general plan should reflect that. Uh, but it is also about our built environment and. The way that we want it to evolve and embody who we are as a community. It's focused on the physical configuration of our town. And how we build and use the land, not on the demographics of who lives here or the characteristics of our community members. Um, so more specifically, as to this particular proposal. And this item before you regarding the proposed sixty individual text changes. I just want to highlight the last bullet point on this page. Um, so while adopting inclusionary language is very important and it is a very meaningfully. Is very meaningful as a action towards racial equity and inclusion. Um, to create a welcoming and inclusive community regarding town planning policies or programs or actions. Like the ones you were discussing tonight in the um, in the in the safety element or the ones that you'll be discussing. Or that you have been discussing in the housing element. So in terms of these planning, the policies and the programs and the actions. This proposal does not have any materially change, material changes to those policies. Um, no material changes are being proposed and the replacement text is wholly consistent with the intent of the sections in which they are found. And in fact, um, at the town council meeting where this was discussed. Um, legal counsel for the town also weighed in and confirmed that the proposed text changes are not material. Um, in nature. And because of this distinction, that it's not a material planning or land use amendment. Um, and the many complicated material changes that you will be making to the general plan um, in the coming months. It also feels important that these two items should be addressed separately. Um, as two bodies of action so that they don't get confused with each other. So it's really clear. as two bodies of action so that they don't get confused with each other. So it's really clear that one is about racial equity and not material changes to land use planning, while as the other acts that you discuss tonight on housing element, those are going to be material changes to our general plan. So this proposal is simply to ask us to be more specific and tangible in describing what we mean and what we love about our community and what our intentions are for the town going forward, rather than to continue to perpetuate the use of an oblique phrase that may mean any number of things to many different people and that perpetuates a history of what was once intentional segregation. So that's the, the overview. You have the specifics in your packet with respect to the 60 find and replace changes. I did go back through, there were spelling corrections that needed to be made to the first version, so they've all been spell corrected. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Shelley, so much for all of this work and for all the time you've taken to make the presentations to the various groups that you presented to. It's really good to see you and
Good to see you too.
Thanks for doing this. So before we open this up to the public hearing, do commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Jensen?
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. The, so there's one point where, I think comes in your slides, you're talking about the name character and it specifically points out community character, which is something that I can see as a little subject. However, as far as I can see, that is not the term that's mostly used in the specific plan. It talks about the character of housing or what something looks like. So those are a little bit two things. Can you allude to that a little more?
I, when I did the, I did a find and replace in the general plan and there were, there are still instances in there where it talks about the, where it was very specific, where it talked about the geotechnical character of the soils, for example, or the the character of the, there were some places where it did talk about the character of the tree species or something like that, where it was very specific to a, a specific physical char, physical characteristic. Those haven't been replaced. The only ones that were replaced were where there was general community character or character of the community or something like that, that the very specific physical ones were not amended. The bubbles that you see, the bubbles that you see on that last slide or that you saw on the last slide that said land use characteristics or historic nature or anyhow, that was, that was the intent, was just to replace the ones that were not as specific as they could have been.
Okay, Commissioner Swift?
And a question for staff on this. Some of these recommended changes apply to the housing element. When I look at the housing element, they aren't in there. For example, our housing element that we have is 2015 to 2023 and is not the housing element that's in the general plan document itself. So I wonder why those changes are in this when they aren't in our current housing element. Also, we're currently updating the safety element. So there, I think there were a couple of changes in there related to the safety element. So I question why we're making those changes when we're in the process of updating our safety element. So can you respond to the currency of the housing element for me, please?
Yes, and as always, I appreciate the acuity of Commissioner Swift's analysis. What you've caught is that the housing element that's contained in the general plan is not the current housing element. There was a sort of a shuffling shortly after the general plan was adopted where they separately adopted and updated housing element. So even though, I guess it was in 2012, they had adopted a general plan with a housing element in that, that, that they subsequently adopted a new housing element in 2015. So that represents the difference between the housing element that, that has actually been adopted. So I would say we would probably not need to focus on those changes. They may still exist to a certain extent in the adopted safety element or housing element and certainly in the adopted safety element, but as you point out, the town is in the process of amending a new housing element and safety element and we have already vetted that to avoid use of the term character. So I think we're, we, we could not focus on those as much.
Well, I think the current housing element that we are in the process of updating, I did not find these references. So that was my question to you, why we would even be looking at that within this process?
Okay, well, we could take another look at that and confirm that, that those phrases are not in that, but insofar as by the end of 2022, we will have a new safe, our housing element and safety element, which will not have those phrases assuredly. I don't think that that's a, a high priority in terms of looking at word replacement.
Before I call on Commissioner Green, let me just ask for some clarification on that question. I, I guess I would not recommend that we provide to the town council a recommended changes to an outdated housing element at all and that it, those pages from, I think, the April 2012 housing element be excluded from the presentation, the, the recommendations that we are sending up to the town council so that we would like remove those pages, put in the current housing element where it belongs. And if the word character, you know, does not need to be amended in the current housing element, then we wouldn't need to include any of those recommended changes. Is that what you're talking about, Ben?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Green?
Thanks for that clarification too. That was a, that was an issue too. Let me, let me say we've come a long way here. Because you know, let me read you the language from a 1925 deed.
Well, Commissioner Green, I'm going to interrupt you.
Okay.
We are in question mode, not comment mode. If you have a question, I would really appreciate you limiting your statements at this point to questions. We will open it up for public hearing and then bring it back for comments.
Okay, great. Let's save it for that.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions for Shelley or staff? Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. I am, I am wondering why we would undertake an amendment to the housing element now? Is this proposed to occur now rather than after we complete the work with the housing element and safety element, which also requires an amendment to the general plan?
I think we just clarified that, well, Commissioner Swift has, Commissioner Swift has reviewed the existing current housing element and informed us that it doesn't include the references. Is that correct, Cindy? That it does not include the references that would be recommended for change if we did what Shelley is recommending here. Is that right?
I went through and could not find them in that and the references that Ms. Hamilton made was on the basic general plan. She did not look at the current housing element.
So, so what I was recommending, Commissioner Fregoso, is that rather than send to the town council a redlined general plan that includes an outdated housing element from 2012 that is no longer in effect, that we would remove that housing element from the red line and replace it with the current housing element before we send it to the town council.
I'd agree with that. I, I got that.
All right. Any other questions of commissioners for staff or Ms. Hamilton? I have a question. You know, I noticed as we were going, as I was going through some of these things that there's just other mistakes or odd things in the same provisions that, that we are recommending be edited for the word character and you know, it hurts me to see a weird typo in something and not correct it when we're correcting some other part of the sentence. So I'm just wondering, you know, if there's a dash in the middle of a word that makes no sense, can we remove, can we recommend that removal as long as we're fixing that line? Or is that out of bounds?
It's in the same, it's in the same light. There's nothing to prevent your commission from making that recommendation. I, I certainly wouldn't recommend putting any particular effort into doing that, but if you're saying, hey, this line has something else that's, you know, that, that, that is, is improperly spelled or a, a poor word usage, I, I don't think it's hurtful to, to say change this too. I mean, it's, it's a quick edit.
Great. Thank you. All right. I don't see any other hands from commissioners with questions. So I'm going to look at the attendees. If anyone in the audience would like to provide a public comment on these items, on this matter, please raise your hand. I see Pamela Megs first and then Mark Bell.
You ready for me? Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, well, to start with, I spent 10 years on the General Plan Advisory Committee prior to the Planning Commission. Then I spent nine years on the Planning Commission. So I know the document up and down and sideways and you name it. I know the document. We went through many, many committees, meetings throughout the town. It was a very inclusive process. Mimi, you were there for the open space element. So I first want to start off with, well, I appreciate Shelley's passion. I don't feel really comfortable about a small group of people doing this strong effort on wiping out character. I do agree that we need to make changes, come up to the 20th or the 21st century. But I am asking that if you're going to make all these changes about character, which was an inclusive town-wide process with a consultant for 10 years, that we go back to that process. I do not feel really comfortable about a small group who are, you know, using authors and there's a lot of books out there on racism, et cetera. There's a great one out now called Woke Racism. So I don't want to get into that, but I'm just saying that's my first take on the process. Secondly, is there a rush? What is the rush? You know, this is a vital document for the town. It governs the town. So I, I wanted to bring that up. And last, I did some searching around on diversity elements for general plans. And they've been existing for three or four years, maybe longer. And I'm wondering if we could, however you want to do it, maybe, you know, create an advisory committee and then get a subcommittee to do a diversity element. And it may help some of what's driving this character issue. And I do also want to say there's no malice in those years I was there about character. You know, we're all learning, we're all realizing, we, we, you know, it's so unconscious, a lot of racism, but we're here now and we can make it a better community and we can create an openness for all people to be involved. So that's my statement. And if you'll do some research on a diversity element, which you can, you can do a health element, you can do all kinds of addendum elements to a general plan. That might bring in a lot more condensed information instead of just grabbing all these concepts and ideas and wiping out character. And I, I don't know, I just, I get very confused when I see too much data. And on this, this, this issue, I would hope that it could be very clear and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Bell is next.
There you go. Hey, Mimi.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, first of all, I don't know if this attachment A with all the whereas is supposed to be a preface and will accompany the general plan because I'm assuming it has to go to the state. But I look at that and I just think there sure is a lot of hubris in there. And you know, holier-than-thou-ism. And I don't understand why it has to read like that. Secondly, there, the misspellings, misspellings are numerous. They were numerous in the one that I read for the town council meeting. They're still numerous. The words a lot of times are vague. It's like somebody just went to some, to stick something in for the lack of, of a better word. They're not really descriptive. They're not Fairfax words, which is what it states in the attachment A. You know, village-like, I looked up for synonyms. I got cowtown, podunk with a capital P and outpost. Now, if you're looking at the general plan and the way the general plan reads as preventing people of color from moving to Fairfax, I don't see how that is going to change somebody's mind. If somebody's going to buy a house, they look first at the price, they look at the school district, they look at the tax basis. Very rarely does that somebody get around to a general plan. And if they read the general plan and looked at the history, then they might think, well, who is this Fairfax guy? And then find out that he comes from a family that made money in this country off the backs of slaves. So then you might as well change the town of Fairfax, the name of the town of Fairfax. Because to me, if you're going to go down this slippery slope, then you have to change the name because you have, the town's named after a guy whose family kept slaves until world, until the Civil War. As far as redlining in Fairfax, how did the Fong family end up owning half of the downtown if people of color weren't allowed to own property? And I'm sure there are many other cases. You know, this has gone, you know, beyond. People have to make a choice. I was just reading about Eichler. Eichler had a fight with developers' corporations or a national group because he refused to put in racial covenants. So he quit the group. So that means that the Eichlers out in Terre Linda had no racial covenants. But what's the makeup of the Eichlers? There's more to where people live than just it's Marin County, it's than just it's Marin County, it's 90% white. There's a lot of support, you're a lot of family, there's a lot of other social issues that come into play. And I think that this is like, it's just like a bunch of psychobabble for somebody who's got a guilt complex. I'm sorry. That's how it comes across to me. There are real things that people could do. There are real things that the racial equity Social Justice Committee could have done, but they didn't do anything. This is the only thing that they're hanging their hat on. They had $65,000. How did that help people? Were there scholarships? No. Were there grants? No. Did they buy computers for people? No. Did they help the people in Marin City who were freezing their butts off for the third winter in a row? No. Anyway, I think that this is absurd. I think that having one person go in and rewrite a document that 30 or so people worked on is really against what the spirit of this town is. And I think that you guys should put a negative on this and take Pam's advice and have a committee. Okay, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark. Deborah Benson, I saw your hand up. Yeah.
Hi, thank you all for hearing me. Thank you, Shelley, for all of your heart-based work on this. I have no problem with the term village character. And it seems that that makes me a racist in the definition of these changes. And I do have a question about how one person's politically-based motive to change the language of the general plan eliminates the possible viewpoints of the entire population of the community of Fairfax, you know, whether Shelley was a member of the Planning Commission or not. I would say let's take a poll on who agrees to change all of this language. Let's see who agrees with the Rothstein author. Many of the academe do not. There are a lot of different opinions out there. I'm reading a book right now called Exploring White Fragility: Debating the Effects of Whiteness Studies on America's Schools by Christopher Passley. And he's not really in favor of all this business. Although, although, you know, the intent here is to, is to eliminate racial injustice, I think what's really happening is that it's creating a divisiveness between, you know, the, all of the people in our community. And there seems to be no, no room for a differing opinion. And I would say 90% of the residents of Fairfax that really polled on this would disagree that, you know, terms village character are horrendous and need to be changed. It's, this, this motion is exclusionary. Let's see, you know, I, I read a lot and I, I explore a lot. And right now, the term mother is being taken down because it is insulting to transgender people who have decided that they want to give birth and are able to and, and, and decide that they're being insulted by people who give birth being called mothers. And they want people to be called instead birth-giving people. And I, I just, you know, I'm really open to whoever does whatever they want to do in the world and, you know, whatever they want to call themselves, but, but there seems to be this, this, this motion to, to decide on the other side what people can or cannot do. And I just wonder where it's going to stop, you know? I guess that's not very contained, but I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me look and see if we've got any other hands raised. Mark, I'm not calling on you a second time. Frank Edgar.
Thank you.
Wait, Frank, just a moment. Hold on just a second, Frank. Mark, if that is Lynn Shen raising her hand, I would call on her there. Go ahead, Frank.
Frank Edgar met away. In speaking to the first of the two general plan rewrites that you're working on, removing the word small-town character and village atmosphere for the town plans to codes. I scanned the 339 pages. It took a while to get through them, checking all the, 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 the red, the red language that's been added. I can tell you that Fairfax has always been a town that marched to its own drummer. We need to understand the history of Fairfax. You know, it is unfortunate that some label Fairfax as a racist town from the past. Fairfax was an Italian immigrant town as a result of the building of Alpine Dam. We recall Little Italy in the 1920s. Then the US House Un-American Activities Committee came to Fairfax in the 1930s to hold hearings in the Fairfax Pavilion to rid the town public officials, to rid the town of the public officials who were communists. In the 1940s and 1950s, that brought summer revelers to Fairfax for parties and swim, and swimming. Fairfax had more bars per capita than any city or town in Marin. The 1960s and early 70s Fairfax was known as the LGBTQ community of Marin County. Downtown merchants, I mean, listen, they loved our town, we loved them. It was, it was, it was just, it was just a place to be. In, in, in the, in the 19, in the 19, late 1960s and 70s, Fairfax was called a hippie town nationwide. I was called the hippie California mayor back in 1970. Fairfaxians fought to protect our town from overdevelopment. There were initiatives, recalls, and referendums. People of color were attracted to our town because it was affordable and welcoming. Our neighbors right here in Meadowway were Archie Williams and George Tong and their families. Is the purpose of the language changes to urbanized Fairfax? Is that where we're going with this? Three to five-story buildings along the Sir Francis Drake Broadway Center Boulevard corridors. The town council had said the planning commission would see the current language lined out and the new language added. We see the new language, but not what is being deleted or replaced. So someone earlier mentioned or asked the question, why is Fairfax amending its general plan twice this year? You know, I, I think what we need to do is to put together one general plan amendment to meet the purpose and intent of, of, of the Rena numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, I'm going to go back and look at the attendees list and I do see Mark's hand, so come on back in.
And yes, it's Lynn.
Hi, Lynn Shen. I, I just wanted to, to support what Deborah Benson was saying and I, I think that most people in Fairfax would agree that maintaining a village character is not an evil thing to do and it's, I mean, a village is, is nice, you know, it's like it's a small community and I don't see what's so wrong with that. I don't see how that should be removed. I think that's pretty much the, the, the style of this town and, and it's, it should stay that way. I think that's why people like it here. So I just wanted to support what she was saying about that, that it seems a little silly to remove that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn Shen. Okay, going to look and see if there are anybody else who would like to speak on this issue. Looks like all of our attendees have already spoken on this issue. Thank you all so much for staying up late and participating in this process. I'm going to bring you back and see if Shelley wants to make any comments in response to the public comment.
The only part that I, two things that I would add on the urgency question is for a lot of people, racial equity is a very urgent issue. It's overdue. It's late. And taking steps now are important. For some of us who don't have to experience microaggressions on a daily basis, it might not feel as urgent, but for many people, it is urgent. With respect to doing this now and then continuing the work that you're doing for the more substantial material land use and planning changes, again, having been involved in a process that can go many different directions while you're involved in it, I would encourage you to take the process in bite-sized pieces. And this is a piece that has been discussed for eight months with a number of different committees and reviewed and input given by a lot of different people. And it's an action that you can take. It's an action that the town council can take to move forward on the racial equity and social justice commitments that have been espoused. And I don't see any reason why it can't be done. Again, it's not material land use and planning changes which are what you will be talking about by amending the safety element and the housing element. Those are going to be very substantive, substantive. There's a lot in there. This is different and I would think it's appropriate to address it separately and differently. That's all.
Thank you, Shelley. Are there other questions of the commissioners of Shelley before I close the public hearing? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you so much, Shelley. And I will close the public hearing now and bring it back to the commissioner and we'll start with Commissioner Green.
Okay, I have just a few things here. You know, Fairfax, a lot of towns, a lot of cities, and I've seen it many times, traveled all across this country. We don't have the thing called the other side of the track here in Fairfax, you know, we don't have, we, we have, our neighbors are all races, creeds, colors on my street anyway. And I think it's true throughout the town. So we, we don't have that on the ground anyway, of any kind of discrimination here based on race. But let me read you the, I was going to start doing this earlier, but I just want to get this out because you need to understand this, I think. And, and Shelley, you know, I want to start out also saying thank you for all this work. It's really difficult. But, you know, used to, I have a 1925 deed from an area in Marin County. I just want to read you a little bit of the language so that you'll see it's not just, it's not hidden anywhere, okay? It says, "No person or persons other than of the Caucasian race shall occupy or be permitted to occupy said real property or any part thereof." That is pure illegal now and racist as you can be. So that we want, you know, if we had any language like that, we would want to eliminate that. It wouldn't even be allowed. That's the way it used to be. That's 1925 Marin County. So we've learned always wonderful. I understand also looked at the San Diego article, one of the, in the presentation, there was a mention of this article, Community Character Concerns Are Veil and a Thin One by Al Abdallah. And he makes a very good point right up front. He says, "Why are we selectively protecting the character of only certain communities? And what specifically is the nature of the quote 'character' we are choosing to preserve?" That question really kind of clarifies what we need to do if we're changing this language at all. I really heard, you know, the public comments and I, I'm thinking not quite what they say, but I, I think another way to approach this, if I might, rather than, you know, Shelley, you did a great job. And I, I just want to say that also. And it's tedious as heck to do this. But I would have also liked to see the cross-out and the new language next to each other because it's kind of hard, it was kind of hard to, for me anyway, to edit. It's not the usual red line that I'm used to. But I just want to make sure, you know, I don't think we have the time to, to say today we can resolve to adopt all these changes because some of them don't make sense. Some of them really need to be gone over by some, you know, grammar and legal review, I believe. So there's some of the, some of the changes, taking out, you know, historic character, for example, and replacing it with, with another important historic element. It, so if we have a history element of the plan, then great. But if we're going to say another important historical element of the town, I think that kind of, that could lend to some confusion in, somebody might then start looking for a history element in our, in our general plan. So I think what I'm saying here, and there's another way to get at this, and we could have a, we could, you know, amend this general plan with the correct housing element, I totally agree with that, just up front and say that something like, you know, a paragraph up front, you know, the use of the word "character" throughout is not intended to, to, to allude to any attempt to bring a racial element into our, our general plan and Fairfax is an open and welcoming community. Something like that. And that, that would eliminate kind of all the changes really and you know, then, then we can, we can kind of get on with it. So, so, you know, it has, it has come a long way. We don't have the other side of the track here in Fairfax. I don't know if amending the general plan to specifically exclude certain words as being racist might say then, did we have a history of racist aspects to our town before this was done? So I don't know, just, just the, the, the timing and all that and the fact that frankly, the procedure here is kind of crazy that we only get one whack at this and, and it's a long, that's a lot of changes. I haven't been, myself, haven't been able to review it all. And we're not racist here, you know, we're just not. It's, it's, we're probably one of the few cities in this country that doesn't have, you know, what I call the other side of the track. All right, I see. Time is getting on and I'm going to stop. I couldn't really, really pass the resolution here myself today. I just have
All right.
to review it.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. I'm going to interject before I call on another commissioner. We need to make a decision tonight. We've been directed by the town council to make a decision. And if our recommendation is not to adopt these changes, so be it. If our recommendation is adopt some of them and not others, so be it. I'm sorry that you didn't review all of them, but that's part of our task. If our, you know, the options are If our, you know, the options are recommend the changes that have been presented to us. Recommend some, but not others of the changes that have been presented to us. Or recommend that the changes not be made. That's it. I'm not gonna accept a, you can't do this tonight. We have those three options and we need to do one of them. And I will add that it has gone under legal review, and I believe Janet is here on the, on our panel this evening, and she could weigh in, but I think we've already heard that the town attorney has determined that the changes that are recommended that are before us are not substantive. Janet, could you confirm that for me before I call in the next commissioner?
Yes, that's correct. I think they are word changes. They're, they're changes in words that don't actually change anything as far as the general plan itself is concerned.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have anything else to add there?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. So Commissioner Fragoso, you were next.
Thank you. I have a lot of mixed feelings about this. As as a Latina who lives in Fairfax, how many of us are there in Fairfax? We're not in a majority. And I, I guess my point is, I don't have a problem with the word "character." I can understand how people would say, oh, a, a, a white community would say, oh yes, we want to maintain the character of our community. That could be, that could be, you know, if it's an all-white community, sure, that means they want it to be all-white. I personally don't have a problem with the word "character," though. My, my biggest concern is, well, I appreciate the effort. I know there's been a lot of effort into this, but my concern is, how much does it move the needle to change the word "character" in our general plan? I think what would move the needle is to eliminate the clause that only Caucasians can inhabit these homes. I think to move the needle in Fairfax would be frankly, how many poor people can afford to buy a house in Fairfax? I think moving the needle would be providing affordable housing for poor people who are typically ethnic and not white. There, there's a lot of white, poor whites as well. But that's on, that's on, on one side of my, my thought process. The other side is that while I might go along with changing some of the uses of the word "character" or village qualities, I, I do, I understand that some of the language we want to change is, is not concise. It's not clear. It could be made more clear. For instance, the example of visual character or architectural character. I think that there are architectural characters. There are architectural designs and timeframes. There are historic style and character of architectural design. And so I, I, I can't vote to just eliminate the word "character," not that that is precisely what Shelley is recommending here. The one word I really could not agree to is aesthetic. I think once we start talking about an aesthetic look and feel, then that is totally subjective. What's aesthetic to me may not be aesthetic to me, me. I would not want that to be one of the words that we use by itself to replace "character." Aesthetic quality, no. Architectural character and quality, historic, yes, but so my, my biggest objection here is to the word aesthetic. I think that, that, you know, people would have arguments about what the hell aesthetic is. Village-like? I don't have a problem with village character either. Village-like, I think is less clear than just small-town village design and scale and character. So I don't know, there are historic characters. I believe if you look at architectural terms and environmental preservation terms. I'm not talking about social racial equity. I'm talking about the language of architecture and preservation rely heavily on architectural character. Preservation of social fabric, environmental and historic social fabric. Which is not meant to, to be historic racial social fabric. It's meant to be, there is a, a social fabric to design and architecture. So I think we're mixing those in a way that makes it less clear in some of these instances. If we're going to change the words, then I think we should look not for aesthetic, which is too general, but more architectural and design terms that are devoid of racial influence, racial connotations. If I had to vote right now to adopt this as it is, I would have to say no. I would want to have more discussion while I appreciate the effort and the intent of the racial and social equity committee. I wouldn't feel, as a Latina who has experienced racism and exclusion, I would not feel that this alone is a step in the right direction of eliminating racism in our communities.
Thank you, Commissioner Fragoso. Commissioner Swift?
So, the current general plan was developed at a lot of community meetings. And there was a lot of public participation in them. In addition, you had committees like the Open Space Committee that were vital in developing the open space element, the conservation element. I listened to the public comments that were made at the town council meeting. And the comments tonight from members of the public. And what I hear from them is that this is rushed. For, one individual said, you know, the October meeting was the first time that they had seen or heard any of this. The RESJ, in the staff report, it mentions that the RESJ had this on a July 1st meeting, and that meeting was canceled. Then they took it up at an August 5th meeting, and there's no minutes or video from that online for members of the public to get their input on that. There's no, as one commenter mentioned tonight, there's no legal clock that we need to meet on doing this work, and it's important when we look at our general plan to bring in that, that community engagement, because it is a document that is important to the entire community. You know, I've, I've heard read comments by an elected official that talked about Fairfax being a model of democracy. I think at the council meeting, one council member said that this should reflect the values of the entire community. You know, if it's important work, then I think we need to take the time to bring the community in and involve them in this effort, and that hasn't been done. So I could not recommend moving this forward to the council.
Thank you, Commissioner Swift. Commissioner Jansen?
Thank you. Racial justice is incredibly important, and yes, it's urgent. I, I think what Ms. Hamilton has done, she stuck her neck out, I think it's very laudable. I appreciate that. However, I don't believe it's done in the right way. I think the word "character" is not something that by itself establishes racial injustice. And it's very difficult if you start replacing words or names, that you're not just falsifying history. And actually trying to hide what it is that you're trying to defeat. So I, I don't agree with the very basis of that, and I will give an example of that. If you, if you take a tour guide of the city of San Francisco, from wherever in the world, you'll find the description of the character of Chinatown. Now, what kind of racial injustice would that be? Is it better if it's the village of Chinatown? I, you can see that it gets very difficult. It's not an easy answer. So to just blatantly start ripping that word out and replacing it in the attempt to be better, I think is dangerous and certainly not something we should do on a whim. If it has to happen, it has to happen, as I think has been mentioned before. With community input, it needs a lot more time. And the way it stands right now, I did actually read through them. In many cases, the description is quite well. I mean, it does, actually, is more specific to what is trying to be expressed. But in many cases, it's not. And in particular, and I will point them out, since somehow we seem to be a little bit under the gun here. Looking in the documents, page 51, it talks about the design aesthetics. I, I think Commissioner Fragoso mentioned it as well. That shouldn't be that way. Maybe it should be design quality. You could do that. Same page further down, it goes into the design and scale of the structures. Well, I don't think so either. The scale is important, but you do not need to have adjacent structures to be the same design. And this goes on, there are more of these. The architectural design comes back, page 41. And again, it, it tries to stipulate what the architectural design should be. It should, it should be about quality. And so the replacement of the words by thems, by itself causes new problems. And as it stands right now, I would not, I could not agree with what's being proposed. But I do appreciate you, and I understand very well where it's coming from. I think it's an important issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Chair Newton. I also want to thank you, Shelley, for not only the effort, but particularly the intent. I do believe strongly that it's an issue that we should all be more aware of and champion, championing. I actually tried to enter this conversation or this presentation with an open mind and hope to learn a little bit more about the particular issues of the word itself. And how it is affecting us and describing our community maybe in the wrong way, not the way I see our community anyway. And I'm not convinced, and I, I, I'm resistant to taking a word that's centuries old and somehow letting it be used to describe something that I don't believe we are either. I was able to read through the whole list, and I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Jansen, that some of them are, I think that, that the general plan could have just been written better. But I don't think that we could holistically just change them all out and make, make a better document, frankly. And yeah, at, at this time, I couldn't support it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody, for weighing in. You know, I, I've struggled with this, because when, when it first came up to the RESJ committee, you know, I, my immediate reaction was similar to what you guys are all saying in terms of, you know, what's so wrong about the word "character." But I really hesitate to, you know, impose my white, privileged view on, you know, the you know, there's a, there's a problem with the majority making decisions that have detrimental effect on the minority. And, you know, I feel that, that if people are harmed by the use of a word, whether it is intentionally meant to harm them or, or unintentionally harming them, that, you know, the majority, the, the white majority, most of us here have an obligation to take a step back and allow the minority to lead the decision-making. It's something that I felt strongly about when the, you know, Drake High issues came out. And now we've got Archie Williams High. And, and I know that that was incredibly difficult for a lot of people to accept in terms of the need for a name change. But I have, you know, I, I worked with you know, a group of people that worked very hard to get the name of the Dixie School District changed. And, you know, when there was a challenge to that as, you know, well, this is, we're proud of this name. You know, one of the, the things that I said was, "A rose is a rose is a rose," you know? By any other name will smell as sweet. And, you know, the fact that people are so emotionally tied to a specific word when that word really doesn't do anything for them, but rather, you know, is actually harmful to another group. I just think it's the right thing to do is, you know, look at the change of the word. And so I don't really think, you know, I wanna second-guess the idea that the word "character," whether intentionally or unintentionally, you know, represents a harm to people in our community who perceive of this as a racially biased phrasing that is meant to keep us sort of monochromatic in our, you know, and, and not as diverse as, you know, we all think of ourselves as being. And, and, you know, we hear, so many of us saying, well, we're not a racist town. Well, we can't say that. There's, you know, over 7,000 people here. And, you know, they represent various levels of not being racist and having unconscious bias to being outright racist. and having unconscious bias to being outright racist. I mean, you know, I think to say we're not a racist town is incredibly, uh, blind. Um, you know, individuals may not be aware of our racism. Uh, individuals may have no intention of being racist, and yet the systemic racism in our society, you know, allows us to continue to live our privileged existence in such a way that others are excluded. So, I guess I, you know, I hear what you guys are saying, and I've struggled with, uh, you know, where I personally come out on this. And ultimately, you know, in looking at each and every one of the changes here, I keep asking myself, "Do I have a strong reason for leaving the word 'character' in here when it is perceived by other people as being harmful?" And I have to take Shelley at her word on that because, you know, like I said, my initial knee-jerk reaction was, "What's wrong with the word 'character'?" But frankly, I'm not the, the one who's harmed by this. You know, I'm not the one that feels this, and, and, uh, I really appreciate Commissioner Fragoso weighing in as a Latina on, on the use of this word and how it affects her. But I don't think it's, you know, any one of us. And so, um, because I think that this was carefully done, and because I think that each of the red line, the red line language that we see, uh, has been a really good attempt at, uh, taking the word "character" and replacing it with specific phrases that were thought about. You know, whether it was design aesthetic or, you know, natural environmental setting or whatever it was, you know, Shelley has clearly gone through and thought about each and every time the word "character" comes up and how best to reflect that. And, you know, I, for one, would be willing to go in and, and look at where aesthetic is used and recommend, you know, something like "design quality," as Commissioner Jansen, uh, suggested. But I really, uh, don't feel so strongly about the word "character" that we have to keep it there. And especially when I look at each one of these proposed changes individually. I think they actually, in many cases, improve the clarity of what is meant here. And the "character," once you keep reading it, ends up being an almost meaningless term. And it actually is an improvement on our general plan to fix this. And, uh, despite the, the comments of, "Where's the rush and why are we doing it this way?" You know, again, I keep coming back to the idea that this is not a majority should vote to continue to live with language that harms a minority. I, that fundamentally i- is, you know, uh, an anathema to me, that, that the majority should be able to dictate the language if it harms the minority. Because I think people, um, I just don't understand what people's, uh, need to have a specific word maintained in our general plan is. And I think that the thoughtfulness justifies a recommending, uh, approval of, of the resolution. I personally would, would vote in favor of it, and I would, uh, be willing to entertain specific changes. I, like I said, I noted other typos. I have potential changes that I would recommend for the resolution. It doesn't sound like I'm in the majority here, so, uh, those are my thoughts. And Commissioner Green, I don't know, did you want to say something else?
Well, I, I had no intent to suggest that there are no racist people in, in here, uh, in the town of Fairfax. There are, I'm sure. Um, I'm just here to say that, okay, let me just make this, uh, clear from kind of a logic perspective. It's not a great idea to sort of redline a word out of an agreement uh, and then present it without a, uh, a response from the other side. So all those people who say, and this is a contract, this is a contract between the people of Fairfax and the government of Fairfax, and we hire the government of Fairfax to put this together and present it to the state, and it's a contract between the government of Fairfax and the state of California. And I think we need to be more careful when we change it. But I do agree with you, Mimi, that, that the, most of the changes that I've looked at improve the clarity of the document. And that's not necessarily racial. It just says, maybe they overused the word "character" when they wrote it. Because I wasn't on that committee. I didn't help write this. Um, the, the language does improve clarity, but I think we need to, we can't, I mean, procedurally, again, I think we need to run this by the public, and, and with all due respect to town, you know, the town attorney. Fine, there may be no substantive changes legally in your mind, but there might be on the part of the people. We don't know. I don't know how many people might have looked at it. But, uh, you know, I had some definite issues with some of the clarity of some of the language, too. I didn't even think about arc, uh, and the architectural perspective. That's really another viewpoint. Um, and the architects are a subclass of people who live in Fairfax who would be affected by what this says. I don't think we have a racial bent here. I don't think the word "character" was used in any kind of racial way here at all. And, um, I do respect the work that it took to get through this. So, but I couldn't support it now because I don't think, the other party to the contract, frankly, has had a chance to look at the red line, and that's, that's where I'm going from. Thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioner comments, or does somebody want to make a motion? Commissioner Jansen.
Um, I think, yeah, listening to all the things we heard, I think the concerns overlap somewhat. I think most notably is the, to what degree it's necessary, or to what degree the word "character" in the way it's used is actually harmful, because that's the underlying issue. But then if you take it out, which might be a good thing, when you replace it, you have to be careful what to do. And based on where it is, I, I don't believe that it should move forward, so I could carry a motion to reject. Um, let me go find. I need to find the motion number. So there should be. Reso.
If, if, I don't believe I ended up with a resolution number. I apologize for that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't see it in there.
Yeah, so we, I, I would insert that, um, once I have that. So just, uh, res-
We, you can just take it on a minute action.
Right.
A motion to send a, uh, negative recommendation on these particular changes to the town council would be in order.
So if I could ask the chair, we don't need to have that in front of us, because all we have in front of us is the resolution to move it forward.
Correct. So you would not be adopting that resolution. You would instead be taking a minute action uh, just on a, a voice vote to send it to the council, send it back to the council the way they've requested. But instead of a positive recommendation, it would go with a negative recommendation that you recommend to the council that they not adopt the changes at this time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Chair Newton, you are still mute.
And I can't believe you guys can't read my lips at this point. Um, maybe we did. So I take it that that is a motion by Commissioner Jansen? And is there a second?
A second.
All right. So Ben, I think you'll have to do the roll call.
Okay, uh, Member Fragoso?
I'm sorry to clarify. If I say yes, that means I vote to send a negative recommendation to council. If I say no, that means I don't want a negative recommendation to go.
Correct.
Then I will, uh, say yes to the motion at this time.
Okay. Member Green?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Uh, Member Swift?
Aye.
Uh, Member Jansen?
Aye.
And Chair Newton?
No.
Okay, motion carries five-one.
Thank you all so much, and thank you, Shelley. And we will finish that item, uh, and move to the next one. And, you know, we had a request that we get done by, uh, 1:00 AM for the lunar eclipse, and I had thought I would get us out of here by 9:30, because I'm a perpetual optimist. Uh, let's move to the minutes from the October twenty-first, uh, commission meeting. Does anyone have any changes to those minutes?
I have two insignificant changes. On page two, Commissioner Green is referred to as "she," and on page two, Chair Newton is referred to as "he" in one sentence. Uh, that's, that's the only problem I could find in them.
Thank you very much. Uh, anyone else with any proposed changes to the October twenty-first meeting minutes? Seeing none, uh, do we have a motion to approve the October twenty-one meeting minutes as corrected by Commissioner Fragoso?
I move approval of the October twenty-one meetings with the simple corrections that were made.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion Fragoso and a second Swift. Ben, you'll have to take roll call again.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Fragoso?
Aye.
Commissioner Jansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Swift?
Aye.
And Chair Newton?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have the Planning Director's report on the workshop and other things.
Yes, um, very briefly, uh, tomorrow, or tomorrow, Saturday, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, and we anticipate that it'll probably wrapped up a little bit before then. Um, we will be conducting our first major, uh, public workshop, um, looking at the entire scope of the housing element um, and focusing in, uh, for the first time on housing opportunity sites. Um, these have been discussed by, uh, various groups in the commission, uh, but really, i- in, in, and the Affordable Housing Committee, most recently, um, looking at this, uh, it'll have recommended, um, um, housing unit ranges. Um, the, I think the operative approach on this is, uh, to take a Big Ten approach where everything is in until, uh, the community recommends otherwise. Um, we will be, uh, applying what we're calling, uh, Planned Fairfax Housing. It's using a, a platform that's, uh, referred to as Balancing Act. Um, staff considers it, uh, a really marvelous tool to determine, uh, public preference. Um, and we hope to get a good turnout. Um, there, I think there was some discussion going around the community that, uh, some people may not be able to uh, participate at all in the workshop unless they register. Um, that is incorrect. Um, the workshop is intended to be interactive. Um, and so, uh, we will have polls, surveys, and then finally, a discussion of how to use the Planned Fairfax Housing tool, um, and people are welcome to participate.
How do we log on?
Uh, you can, well, if you've got a postcard, um, that describes how to register. You can also go to the Fairfax Speaks, thank you for that question. You can go to the Fairfax Speaks website right now, um, and register for the workshop or, or simply log on. It has the URL for the workshop. So we will also be putting out an email blast, uh, tomorrow, uh, posting it on the town's website. So all that information will be up tomorrow, but, um, it's, there, there are various mechanisms where we've tried to provide that information about how to log on. But you can also, uh, register, and you will get a specific invitation on how to log on. So just go to the, yes.
This is not a planning commission meeting per se, right?
No. This is a, a public workshop. So the commission's welcome, the council's welcome, but it's not, it's not intended to be either of those two groups. It's a community-wide meeting.
Who's facilitating?
EMC, um, and, uh, the people from the Balancing Act group. So there's a, there's a whole team. So in any event, um, I hope to see most, if not all, of you there. I think it'll be a, a really good learning tool. And I would also point out tonight that, uh, you know, among the many things we've lost with the pandemic and the lack of meeting in person, one of the things we've gained is that the, uh, public interaction features uh, that we'll be unveiling, uh, and the questions, uh, polls, things like that, uh, will be available at the Fairfax Speaks website. So, um, this isn't a one-and-done. Uh, we want to emphasize that whatever is convenient for people, we recognize that it may be a little bit daunting for people to chew off the entire, uh, uh, workshop in one go. Uh, commit, you know, three or possibly four hours to that. Um, and if people just want to come and, uh, watch and listen, um, they're welcome to do that for a period of the time. Um, I think our intention is to have a variety of public discussion features, for example, questions and answers, a public chat room, as well as more, uh, focused, uh, engagement tools, uh, like the Balancing Act, uh, slash Planned Fairfax Housing, or the, uh, some of the polls that we'll be pushing out there. So, um, i- i- I, I think it's going to be a good opportunity, and, and the hope is to get hundreds of people in Fairfax uh, involved in this effort to really provide some useful feedback, uh, to the council, not the least of which would be preference surveys in terms of housing opportunity sites. Um, you know, there, there may be some that, uh, there's a very strong consensus that, that we shouldn't be considering. Um, there may be some that there's a pretty strong consensus that, um, those are, uh, the preferred sites. So, and that's what we can get with widespread participation. So that's that. Um,
Ben?
Yes.
Will this be recorded for later viewing?
Yes. Absolutely.
How soon after Saturday will it be available? Do you know? If you don't, that's fine.
If, if I had to guess, I'd say a couple of days, max.
Ben? Ben, can I, can I just make a comment? Uh, I have heard from a couple of different community members that they hear on social media that we are making plans, that the planning commission has already approved a plan for five to 10-story buildings, apartment buildings in our downtown. And I want to just tell the commu- that it's a, it's all a done deal, that there's been no community input. I want to just remind the community that this is a process that's been going on for a long time, that staff and our consultants have engaged every single committee that exists in the town of Fairfax to get their feedback, to start talking about these ideas that are proposals, proposals for changes. I heard someone say that there should be no changes whatsoever to the general plan, which tells me that they don't care about fire hazards. They don't care about flooding, that they don't want to hear about what we're talking about to build in these fire-wise and flood-wise elements into our housing element, to to develop standards that protect not only a new house, but all of our houses. If you're interested in Fairfax, don't just go and get your information from social media and don't believe someone if they tell you that this is a done deal, that there's no community participation, they are misinformed. I encourage everyone to go to these meetings, and they will continue for the next year and a half. Uh, the, the safety element is a wonderful place for people to start to take a look at that. And this community meeting would be uh extremely informative and and just terribly interesting. So that's my recommendation to those in the community who are still up at this late hour, listening to us.
Well, and they'll be able to look at the video of this. And I would also say that uh for people who pay attention or at any point in the future uh want to start to focus on this, they can go back and look at the numerous meetings of which there's minutes and recordings and see how this process has unfolded. And I I thank you for your comments. Uh, it's not a done deal. It's very much intended as a, as a uh, an interactive process. Um, and you can see it uh as we go through that process, meeting by meeting. I mean, the conversation we had about the safety element tonight. And as you point out, uh, the potential for improvement over what we have right now is definitely, uh, I mean, it, that is our intention, and that's what we will achieve.
Are there any uh other questions or comments uh on the Director's Report? Are, so are you done, Ben? Did you have anything else?
Just very briefly, uh, we're doing something a little bit unusual in terms of the town adopting an ordinance pertaining to uh Senate Bill 9. And it's not on the agenda tonight, so I don't want to spend any time or go into details and get any Q and A. Uh, but I will simply say that uh your commission has probably heard that the state, uh, the governor signed into law on September 15th a new housing bill that basically takes areas uh with very few exceptions uh that are single-family, residentially zoned, and allows for the potential to divide lots, to do a lot split, and to put a duplex on each one of the lots. Um, and that is a fact. Um, and that in order to retain some local uh control over what those uh lot splits and the subsequent development looks like, uh, staff is going directly to the council on December 15th uh with an urgency ordinance. I apologize that we did not have time to have it vetted by the planning commission. Um, I would have really preferred to do that. Um, my intention is to come back uh and and have a full discussion with the planning commission um in January uh to to go over that. Um, it's a big change in Fairfax, although as a practical matter, the experts are saying that it might affect 10% of the lots over time. So I just wanted though to uh bring that to the commission's attention so that uh you hear it from staff before you read it in a, in a report to the council.
A question for you, Ben, um, related to the housing element. Um, is there any update on, because you mentioned it, um, you mentioned repairings somewhere in one of your staff reports um on the safety element? Is there any decision on how we're going to address the conservation element?
Um, you know, that was a good point that uh you brought up Commissioner Swift. Um, we have not looked into uh the modifications to the conservation element yet at this time.
Is there a plan to do that at all, or you're not at that point yet?
We're in the early stages of beginning to look at that.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ben, you said that the um for the workshop, pre-registration is not required, but the Fairfax Speaks website says it is?
Well, what we're contermining it as an RSVP, um, a- a- as a, as a, we would prefer that people register. Um, it will enable us to do follow-up uh with the people that do register. So, um, but it is not mandatory. And if it, if it states that on the Fairfax Speak sites, I will get that corrected tomorrow.
Please do. It does say that. I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other uh comments on the Director's Report or questions for uh Ben before my favorite part of the meeting? Okay, thank you, Ben. Um, let's go to my favorite part of the meeting. Not that I don't love seeing all your charming faces. Uh, I would entertain a uh motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. If anyone's alone.
A discussion is, um, we, we had this discussion a while back. The chair can make motions.
Oh, and you know, I just skipped right over the commissioner comments and requests. So let me take a step back. Are there any other commissioner comments or requests before my favorite part of the meeting? Oh, great. I love that. So I heard a motion from Commissioner Fragoso. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor of adjourning for the evening, for the morning? Uh, we got into the morning. Oh, we're still in the evening. Good. Um, time for for Tamela to go see the.
Complete lunar eclipse.
Lunar eclipse.
I think it's, I think we're overcast, though.
We're really over, what time is it supposed to be at 12:30 tonight?
It peaks at 1:03. It started at 11:00.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, God.
So we're, we are hereby adjourned.
In the zone. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.